Okay, good morning. Welcome to the November 7th, 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting for the County of Lake. We'll call this meeting to order and we will start with a moment of silence. Supervisor Crandall?
So I'll go ahead and do a moment of silence. It's Veterans Day coming up and I wanted to highlight, of course, we know that it's really short and not short, but we're having less veterans from like WWII and the Korean War. And so now the Vietnam War veterans are now basically, you know, the most and eldest. And so one of the things that I like to talk about when it comes to veterans that are Vietnam War veterans is the struggle that they went through, not only being drafted and also coming home and not having a lot of support, being basically shamed and whatnot for what they did. They had a lot of problems when it came to their deployments, diseases that they ended up catching, just complete PTSD because of the amount of guerrilla warfare that they went through. And so they weren't able to collect a lot of their veterans' benefits because a lot of it didn't exist. And so they went on with PTSD and people just thought they were basically just having flashbacks and all these other things. And so it was just a sad time and a lot of them didn't get a lot of their benefits until the 2000s, you know? And so they went all that time suffering addicted, using other methods to, you know, curb their PTSD and their, you know, their trauma, you know? So I just wanted to give that moment of silence to them and honor the Vietnam veterans, of course, all veterans, but especially the Vietnam veterans that weren't able to be made whole when it came to that situation, so.
Supervisor Crandall, do you want to read this in the pledge?
Yes. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any extra items to consider that are not appearing on the agenda?
No, we do not.
We'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have any items that need to be pulled? Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I'd like to have further discussion on 5.5, 5.8, and 511.
And we're also pulling 5.3? I mean, sorry, 5.13?
Yes, Chair.
Anyone else? Any members from the public have an item they wish to pull? Anyone in the Zoom room or in, I'm sorry, in the chambers or the Zoom room? Not seeing any, so I will bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5.3 was it? 5.13, 5.8, 5.5, and 5.11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We will wait just a moment until we get to 9:06. Okay, it's 9:06 a.m. Our 6.1 item, public input. Do we have anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room that would like to give public input? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. We'll just wait another moment till 9:07. Okay, it's 9:07 a.m. We will move on to our 6.2 item, Pet of the Week, Animal Care and Control. Come on up.
Good morning. I'm Officer Guard with Lake County Animal Control. This is Remington. He's two-month-old domino pincher. He's up for adoption. He's really good with other pets, of course. He's a puppy, but he's really good. They didn't dock his ears or his tail, but he is full-blooded domino. And we have a bunch of cats and other puppies in the shelter right now. If anyone's interested in adopting, please come down to 4949 Hellbush or call 707-263-0278. Thank you.
He's too cute.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we'll just wait a few more seconds till 9:08. 6.3, 9:08 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month. Vice Chair Simon.
All right. If anyone else wants to come up, come on up. I know Thomas Jordan is here for Scotts Valley. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating November 2023 as National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County. Whereas Lake County has been home to people for greater than 12,000 years, and the richly diverse communities, cultures of the seven tribal nations indigenous to Lake County, the Middletown Rancheria Pomo Indians of California, Co-Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habemotul Pomo of Upper Lake, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and Elam Indian Colony, have informed every aspect of our community's history, policies, and practices of the United States and earlier colonial governments deprived indigenous people in the state of California and Lake County specifically of land holdings, liberty, even life itself. And whereas Native Americans have helped to make our community stronger and more prosperous, on August 3rd, 1990, President of the United States George H.W. Bush declared the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, thereafter commonly referred to as Native American Heritage Month. The bill read in part that "The President has authorized and requested to call upon federal, state, and local governments, groups, and organizations, and the people of the United States to observe such month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities." And whereas this landmark bill honoring America's tribal people represented a major step in the establishment of this celebration, which began in 1976, when a Cherokee Osage Indian named Jerry C. Elliott High Eagle authored Native American Awareness Week legislation, the first historical week of recognition in the nation of Native peoples. This led to 1986, with then-President Ronald Reagan proclaiming November 23rd through the 30th, 1986, as American Indian Week. President Barack Obama made a presidential proclamation on the 31st of October of each year that each respective November would be National Native American Heritage Month. We celebrate the richness of the county's unique tribal history and traditions and the impact the Native cultures have had on every American. Whereas Lake County is committed to protecting the sovereign right of Native American tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities. In observance of Native American Month, the County of Lake encourages all citizens to join in recognition the accomplishments and contributions Native Americans have made to our county, and salutes those who have sought to honor the important role of the tribal leadership in our country's past, present, and future. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of County of Lake to hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 National Native American Heritage Month in Lake County, California, passed and adopted on the 7th day of November 2023. Signed by the Chair of the Board, Jessica Paeska. All right.
Say anything?
I think the supervisors are better able to be spokespersons.
Sounds good to me. So yeah, just wanted to highlight if any of you remember a couple of weeks back, the Hobbiton Park with, in collaboration with Lakeport, because of that park, they held a naming opening and it was very, very, very awesome to see the community come and be a part of that, to invite the Native Americans that were local. I don't know if a lot of you know this, but each and every tribe was represented in one dance. I don't know if people are aware, but commonly, we let, we invite tribes to come and dance and each tribe has their own group that dances. This time, it was every tribe in the county was represented and I don't know if, like for me, it was beautiful to see because commonly, there's a different group. And so because of that event, we were able to see that blessing and see the opportunity for everyone to enjoy it. It was a very positive day. And also, this National Native American Month, there's a lot of events that happen, one being on Thanksgiving Day, a lot of people go to Alcatraz because of what took place more than 40, 50 years ago. And so it's one of those things and we do know that like this month is Native American Heritage Month. Last month, we had Indigenous Peoples' Day because that was, you know, declared a different holiday from Columbus Day. And then also, the month before, California has the California Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, you know, those are, you know, basically like three different things. We, you know, we're grateful to have those and be acknowledged in that way. It's a very, it's a very important thing because it's a healing thing. And so a lot of times, Native Americans feel great that they're acknowledged and, you know, they're steps, you know, to healing and becoming collaborative with one another. So I just wanted to highlight some of that, yeah.
Thank you, EJ. Just want to bring light to California's history. The history here in Lake County, 1851, August 21st, the two treaties were signed in South Lake County at that point from the tribal nations here. You know, we've been landless, some of us since that point. We're all working towards getting our land back. That is the main healing. As tribal nations, we are cousins and brothers to the trees and the animals, and the healing can begin when we all have our land back. And that's a big push for us here in California. There's 109 tribal, federally recognized tribes in California, so it touches every county throughout the state of California. Today's proclamation for Lake County is something I'm proud to do every year since the county has started that. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors and the previous Board of Supervisors that started this. It's just a proclamation, but it means a lot to the tribal nations to be acknowledged and begin those healings. I think you've seen him stand up here and talk about that. We collaborate together, we grow together as we move forward, and just as the county can't do it alone, the tribes can't do it alone, and collaboration as we move forward is the most ultimate thing that we could all be working on as leaders and as people for our community. So, good day today, obviously. We have Thanksgiving coming up and we'll be doing our ceremonies as EJ said, but today is a good day, so thank you very much. Oh.
We have anyone with public input on this item? Either in the chambers or in the Zoom room? Not seeing anyone, so.
I do have a.
Oh, Supervisor Sabatier?
Just real quick before, a lot of the tribes are heading to a gaming event this week and then next week, they'll be going to National Congress of American Indians. So a lot of leadership is traveling, just to emphasize that.
I wanted to ask you guys a question about what was in the proclamation. It says 12,000 years, but I believe that date is incorrect and that it's more. Just wondering if we can review that date and next year, make sure to have something a little bit more, I believe, accurate as to the actual years of that the Native here were in this location, because I believe the history is 17,000 to 20,000 and maybe possibly more. So I just wanted to ask if that could be reviewed, just because I want to make sure that we're putting out the appropriate statements of the history for here.
We'll definitely get that done before.
EJ.
EJ, you're walking away?
Know the drill.
Thank you. Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, our 6.4, 9:09 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Recognizing Veterans on Veterans Day. Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Sabatier?
Supervisor Sabatier, you know, I know I'm the only veteran on the board, but I know that you've been a very ardent advocate, so I'd really like you to read it. And Chris, would you like to come up?
Actually, no. Come up. Please. So I know in having known Chris for a long time, that Lake County is home to one of the highest percentage of per capita veterans in this area. We take care of a lot of veterans, a lot of veterans are in need of services. Chris Talafaro helps provide those connections, as do our Veterans Services in our Public Health Department, and we should continue to provide everything that we can for those that gave so much. This is a proclamation recognizing our veterans on Veterans Day. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life. And whereas, tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century. And whereas, hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century. And whereas, our state is home to more than 1.6 million veterans, the most of any state in the nation. And whereas, Lake County is home to approximately 4,500 veterans, or approximately 7% of our county's population. And whereas, our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas, their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas, our veterans understand the important task before the American service, men and women now keeping, the important task before the American service, men and women are now keeping watch. And now therefore, the Board of Supervisors acknowledge the great contributions and sacrifice of our veterans to both our country and to our local communities. The Board of Supervisors honors the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. Let it be further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors will join the nationwide effort Operation Green Light in showing support for veterans by lighting our Lake County courthouse in Lakeport Green from November 6th through 12th, 2023. By shining a green light, the County of Lake and our residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. Passed and adopted the 7th day of November, 2023.
Thank you for that. I wanted to, I wanted to also give acknowledgement to the Veterans Services Office that's local. They help a lot of folks, they're very efficient. I, you know, I've dealt with them in the past as well and I often refer people there and they have a lot of success. There is challenges at times, but I think a lot of, many instances, you know, veterans have a lot of, you know, things to deal with. And so in some instances, they really need to be walked through it. I know I did. And so it's a very important task to get them the services they need, medical. A lot of times, they come and they don't have that opportunity to be seen, they need insurance, but a lot of the injuries and a lot of the effects of different instances in their deployments and whatnot, put them in a vulnerable spot. And so it's very great to have an office that serves the veterans the way they do. And so I just wanted to highlight that. And then, of course, Chris, you know, he does a wonderful job for us as well.
So Chris Talafaro, I work for Employment Development Department helping veterans find jobs. Just going to get a little backdrop. I got out of the Navy in '07 and I moved here, not from Lake County originally, but I started working with a nonprofit helping homeless veterans get into housing. And in 2008, the only way I could help them was here's a bus pass to Laker, Mendocino, or Sonoma County. So I want to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and all of the organizations locally that have fought to help get a lot of resources locally to the county. That includes a VA clinic that we got in 2010, which now gets us housing opportunities, which gets a lot of other resources that weren't available to Lake County veterans just 20 years ago. So thank you very much to Board of Supervisors for helping our veterans.
Thank you, Chris, for being such a strong and steady advocate. Thank you for all that you do. Do we have anyone in the chambers who'd like to speak on this item? Or anyone in the Zoom room? Hey, 6.5, 9:10 a.m. Item, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for Invaluable Community Service. Supervisor Sabatier?
You guys can all come up. This is a team effort.
I'll come too.
Find where you are. You can all come up. Come on up. Come on up.
If you are part of the Gleaners, we would love to have you up here. So without going into a different item that is on our agenda, Chair Paeska and I have been having discussions about food insecurity and our food bank and what we can do. And in all these conversations, we've always walked away with a sense of gratitude for the amount of work that goes into feeding the people of Lake County who themselves are feeling food insecurity and are in need. When it comes to our emergencies, Gleaners always comes through and we just, we can't forget those moments and unfortunately, I feel like we haven't had this moment with you yet. And so we felt the need to make it a very public commendations, thanking both Redwood Empire Food Bank as well as the Clear Lake Gleaners for all the work that they do to feed our people. So proclamation commending Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for invaluable community service. Whereas Clear Lake Gleaners located in Findlay, California, is Lake County's USDA commodities distributor, the food bank of Lake County. And whereas Clear Lake Gleaners provides consistent and quality service to Lake County residents experiencing food insecurity, including scheduled monthly food box distributions throughout Lake County, cooperation in disaster response to provide food at shelter sites and local assistance centers. And whereas Clear Lake Gleaners always answers the call to serve Lake County's most vulnerable residents with compassion and caring. And whereas Redwood Empire Food Bank of Sonoma County likewise provides supplemental food deliveries to Lake County community members around the lake, sending four truckloads of critical food supplies each week. And whereas the profound need for food support in Lake County is demonstrated, for example, by Redwood Empire Food Bank serving approximately 700 households at Redbud Park each week in just 90 minutes' time. And whereas 16.5% of Lake County's residents live in poverty according to the 2020 census. And whereas collectively, Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank serve approximately 21,870 individuals and 6,558 Lake County households. And whereas current economic circumstances, food price inflation, and the end of public health emergency, cow fresh emergency allotments, make food distributions a vital key in the continued economic and food security of Lake County residents. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby commend Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for their invaluable community service, passed and adopted the 7th day of November, 2023.
On behalf of the Gleaners, I'd like to say thank you. We have not received a proclamation like this from the Board of Supervisors in the history of the Gleaners, to my knowledge. I've been there approximately seven years now and it is appreciated, although I do have some concerns about some of the information that it contains. You reference 21,870 individuals and 6,558 households, but there's no reference as to what period of time that covers. So, and we're serving, I believe it's 5,000 approximate now. Lisa, could you hand me the clipboard, please? Thank you. 1,246 individuals a month throughout Lake County. So I don't know where that figure comes from.
It was approximate.
It is approximate, but we don't know what period of time it covered. We have brochures and calendars for this year and next year to pass out to the board and your clerk counsel. The Clear Lake Gleaners has 145 volunteer members. In addition to that, we have approximately 65 additional volunteers, volunteers on the days of distribution. We have two distributions throughout the month, the first Wednesday and the third Thursday, and that's all the way around the county. So we have Findlay as the main site and then we go to Clear Lake, Middletown, Cobb, Nice, Lucerne, Spring Valley. We are in the process of looking at a second site in Clear Lake, which currently estimate is 280 additional people that we can, or additional families that we can serve. We're very proud to be Clear Lake Gleaners. We've been at the Findlay site for over 40 years and I can't think of a better bunch of people to work with. They're fantastic. And I invite each of the board members to, on the 16th, come to one of the sites, whether it's the Findlay site or the one in your respective districts, and participate in the distribution. We anticipate over 700 people will come through the Findlay site that morning. And the other sites, we're looking at 165, 144. All the sites have boosted dramatically in the distribution numbers. Thank you for the proclamation. It's a pleasure to be here before the board. And if there's anybody that has any questions or anything that I can add, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you very much.
So I just, I want to personally thank you. I do go to the deliveries at the Little Red Schoolhouse quite often and assist with handing out. It's been a little while, but this is really personal for me because after the fire, when I lost my home and I was just barely trying to keep my family together, we did come and get food pickups. Because trying to grocery shop on top of everything when you're homeless and experiencing that level of trauma, it was just more than what we could do. So I could just show up and get a box of food and go home and figure out something to get on the table quickly. So I will never forget that. And I know that there are so many families and individuals and our seniors that are having such a difficult time these days making ends meet with a high cost of food. And that's why we're seeing so many more people. And that's why we're seeing so many more people come up with the need for, at the distribution sites. And so expanding the sites is critical and expanding the capacity is critical. And I hope anyone who's listening can join us a little bit later. We do have an agenda item where we're going to get into this a little bit deeper. So I do thank you so, so much. Both the Gleaners and Redwood Food Bank are here to support all of the people in Lake County. And so I'm going to open this up. If anyone else in the room has comment that they would like to give, which it looks like there is, I'm going to pass the mic.
Good morning. I'm Rachel Dillman Parsons. I'm Deputy Director for Lake County Social Services Eligibility Division, and we administer the CalFresh program, among other programs. And I wanted to take a minute to thank the Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank for all they do within our community to help support food stability and also to be there during disaster response, which is another part of what our department operates. The need in Lake County is great. We have 17,000 individuals enrolled in CalFresh. That's more than 25% of the population. And CalFresh is a supplemental nutrition assistance program. It's only meant to be a supplement to the households' needs, and the food distributions really help to bridge that gap. So what you do is vital to our community and we are grateful for everything you do. Thank you so much.
Anything from the board? All right. Take our pictures.
I know that you asked to say something earlier, but I'm going to mention something. My uncle moved out from Kansas. He works with the seniors and the elders at Robinson Rancheria, and he thinks highly of the Gleaners and he always mentions Lisa and Kate. And so I just wanted to say that as well. Just, and, and they're, they're really involved, I know. And so from the elders in my tribe, they appreciate the work that they do. The Gleaners, of course.
It doesn't look like we have anyone from Redwood Food Bank. If we do, could you please raise your hand in the Zoom room? Not seeing any. Okay.
I'll just make a comment. I know that they're doing their food distribution today in, down at Twin Pines. So there was a line of cars out there, the truck was there and they were, they were giving out food as they drove by. So they do that every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, I think.
Okay. 6.6, 9:15 a.m. Discussion and Direction to Staff Regarding Food Insecurity in Lake County. Supervisor Sabatier, want to take this?
Yes. So again, as I alluded to, Chair Paeska and myself have been in conversations regarding our food insecurity and having a sit down with both the Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank on how to, I like what was mentioned in our meeting, how to not split the pie, but how to grow the pie because there is greater need. Clear Lake Gleaners is our official food bank for Lake County. They receive the full 100% of what is available in proceeds and funds from the state and federal government to help us with food insecurity. We're looking for ways to better accommodate the needs of Lake County. And so we sat down with Social Services, as I mentioned, both Clear Lake Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank. Administration was with us, Matthew Rothstein and Chair Paeska. And we did not want to give direction to our staff to continue further discussions with the state on how to make availability of funds a lot easier, how to help our local Clear Lake Gleaners grow capacity, how to make it easier for us to do what's needed. Especially, I just saw a report, this was provided to the Sonoma County Economic Development, there was some data about Lake County. It was about household struggles of being able to afford basic necessities. Sonoma County was at 36% of their population who struggled with basic necessities, which includes food. And Lake County was at 51%. And, and our need is great, and I think those discussions are very important, especially in light of the inflation that we've seen. We all eventually go grocery shopping at one point or another in the week, and we are seeing how much this is impacting, how much $100 or $10 can purchase for you. It's, it's changing very rapidly. And so I think these conversations are not just important, they're kind of somewhat dire for us to make sure that we can continue to support what the Gleaners have been doing for us since 1985 and seeing how it is that we can also help provide support to Redwood Empire Food Bank, who does a similar service in coming and bringing food to the people here in Lake County. And so just wanted to provide that and get direction from the board rather than direction from two individual board members.
Right. Thank you for summing up our meeting so well.
Not sure if I missed anything.
No, I think you've got it. But ultimately, we need more resources in this county. We absolutely do. We need more resources for the Gleaners and we need more resources for the Redwood Empire Food Bank. And so we would just really like to get your direction as a board for us to proceed trying to get those resources from the state. So do we have any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
More of a question. I don't even know how to phrase it, but one, thank you for the Gleaners. Also, thank you, Redwood Empire Food Bank. And I do plan to be in Findlay on November 16th. Looks like 8 a.m. That looks early to me. But it's more of a question because when, what we're talking about, both in the Gleaners and the food bank and whatever comes from the federal government, you know, it generally involves commodity foods and, and you know, bulk foods that, you know, you take the donations where they come from, you distribute the food that you get and you hope for the best. But just in my own little journey as a, as a emerging supervisor, trying to understand food insecurity through the lens of our native sovereign nations and what that means in terms of lost access here in Lake County to the chai and having a good reliable fishery that can help with food security. I was at Mendocino College a couple of weeks ago, hearing about how it's really hard to get good, good acorns. And not only is it hard to, you know, create the mush that, that was such a staple, it's also, we're losing very rapidly the cultural ability to even introduce these food groups to those people that traditionally have benefited from it. So I don't want to hijack this because definitely we have existing channels as they apply to food insecurity issues. And it generally involves like collecting food and distributing food, and we're not necessarily tuned in to any cultural variations that may be in there. But as we continue to go down this pathway, I just want to continue my own education that whatever food assistance we're giving is not just based on calories and food groups, but also some level of cultural awareness and appropriateness so that we can not only get food to people that are hungry, we can get them the foods that speak to them in their own culture and their own way and provide healing in addition to nutrition. So that was kind of a rambling question about where this all might go. But when we talk about food insecurity, I want to make sure we're hitting all the, not just all the food groups, but also all the cultural issues that we may need to address along the way.
Well, thank you for your input on that. But this is specifically toward, this is an ask to help us get more funding. Because if you look at the memo, for example, Redwood Empire Food Bank is, it costs them $2.4 million to provide food to Lake County and they don't get any reimbursement. And, and so what they're doing is skimming off their other programs in other counties. And that just can't, that's not sustainable. They're not in a good place to be doing that. And here we have Allison Goodman to explain that. So just to narrow this discussion back to the memo, it's just for accessing more funding for these two organizations and expand the capacity. But I will pass this off to Allison. Thank you for joining us. You missed the proclamation, but we'll send it over to you.
Okay, great. Good morning. So we're, we're happy to speak, you know, on this to the larger group. I'm not sure what was shared prior to this, but you know, we are in a position of providing food assistance and even to the aspect of cultural relevancy, that is something that we consider. So while we can't wildly adjust our provision of help per household, we are aware of who we're serving and offering a bounty of fresh produce and shelf-stable items and things that they can say no thank you to and an easy modality for them to do so. So that is something that's always at the forefront of our minds, just to speak to that. But really, this is the goal of getting more funding and more food into Lake County. Essentially, the way that the state contracts are set up is just to say each county has a designated food provider and, you know, they are the one conduit of how to get food into that community. And we are just recognizing that because of the increased poverty that exists in Lake County, you know, why not be more flexible and who can acquire food and funds to go ultimately to the people that need it? So this is a way to work together and, you know, open up more opportunities for us to get food and funding into Lake County.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I wanted to also add, I noticed that you put federal partners. I'm not sure what you're referring to, but there's also a food distribution program on or near Indian reservations. It's conducted by the Sherwood Valley Rancheria. However, they do come to Lake County with partner tribes. And the qualifications are, there's, there's, there's some, you know, one of them being if you have little or no earnings or live on a fixed income such as social security, cash aid from social services, or tribal assistance for needy families. Social Security is a new one because I remember before, a lot of elders weren't allowed to receive it and now they're able to do so. If you live near a reservation as well, or rancheria, you're able to, to go to whichever reservation that's in your vicinity and collect it. There's a calendar, there's a website for it. Another aspect of it is how do you qualify, the eligibility? It's basically, it's income guidelines, of course, and it's, you, of course, have to register that way. If you have Medicare, unearned income, such as tribal revenue is included. At least one member of your household must submit proof of Indian enrollment, or your household must submit proof that you reside on an Indian reservation. So if you have a family member that is enrolled, that's another aspect. And so I don't know if a lot of people know that. That's why I figured I would announce that. One of the downsides, I'm not sure, maybe someone can, you know, fill me in on this, but from what I understand, if you receive this food distribution program, you don't qualify for CalFresh or vice versa. You either choose one or the other. I don't know if that's changed. I'm just, okay, it is, it's still that way. So it depends on what your liking is, but either way, I just wanted to announce that as well because that's another program that brings food into the county.
Great. Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Did you, Supervisor Spatier?
And it sounds to me like Rachel Dillman is aware of the program, but just in case, if you can maybe email that to her, just to make sure. I, I know that in speaking with the Gleaners, the amount that they receive from the state and federal government does not cover the needs of the community and they want to see more. And I think part of the conversation that you brought up Supervisor Green, I know that is a part of the conversation in our Food Policy Council, where we're looking how to increase our food production locally from our farmers. And part of that is also using the sustainability that history has shown us is possible here with, when it comes to acorns, hitch and other things. And so those conversations are happening in the Food Policy Council and how to make that more abundantly available, rather than on a maybe a family-to-family or more niche-driven rather than a larger availability. So I think those conversations are happening right now. What we're looking for is greater funding so we can figure out how that funding can help make sure it serves our community to the best as possible. At that point, we can maybe have a conversation once funding has been made available as to how that funding is used.
Okay. Chair Simon?
Yeah, obviously in complete support to continuing the conversation. And we know it comes down to funding opportunities and those types of things. I want to thank the Gleaners. Multiple disasters, there's been opportunities to help folks that need the food, whether it's Redwood Food Bank, the Gleaners, folks that really need that opportunity or those types of things, have seen them participate in all the disasters that have happened here in Lake County. As far as the continuing conversations, you know, always thinking about how to fundraise money and those types of things, each organization. I know our organization, the Middletown Rancheria, would gladly host any fundraising events or anything. If you guys are thinking of those types of things, I want to put that out there. I don't know if there's been any of those events in Lake County. I haven't seen anything, you know, local people really like to support each other. The other thing I just want to talk about, thank you for bringing up the Sherwood Valley Food Bank. All, you know, each one of our tribes have an agreement with them, you know, where they usually come in. We haven't done that for a while because I think our tribal members may be using the Redwood Food Bank that's right there right now. But we do have that continuous conversation in them coming into Middletown Rancheria when it's needed. As we move forward with the discussion of food security here in Lake County, I appreciate the conversation on the tribal side, but the board and Lake County is moving in the right direction. The cultural burns that are happening are not only burning off and protecting ourselves from wildfires, but as we just did our cultural burn on Middletown Rancheria in our oak grove, it was to make sure that the health of the acorns was one of the main things that we were looking for, for production. Obviously, we do that to get the weevils out so we can collect the right stuff. And as we move forward with tribal nations, talk to each other, already have some tribal folks that have reached out if they can come collect the acorns this year and begin to stabilize that as we move forward. So bringing back these cultural food items are really important. It's something we're all focusing on. So I do appreciate the county, all the fire departments, everybody working together, Tara, everyone is starting to move in this direction. So as we move forward, and I know we talk about acorns, we talk about hitch, but there are many other small things that the tribes eat, you know, I call them the rabbit ear sunflowers, you know, those are like salad for, you know, as you go through, there's many different things. You can eat manzanita berries. There are all kinds of things that are still out there that we're doing. So that food sovereignty from a tribal standpoint is something to keep our culture alive and pass it to the next generation. But ultimately, we know how important the food service is that happens in Lake County. We've had this conversation, I think, at different levels. That's also a place where we can engage the folks that need the help through Department of Social Services, housing, all those things. The folks that have the food insecurity also have other issues that need to be addressed. So taking advantage of those opportunities while folks are picking up the food is really important to understand how we can help those folks that, that just need that hand up to make their lives a little bit better. So I know I'm rambling on now too. But completely support it and anything your committee has together to bring back to the board, I would wholeheartedly support bringing more funds in for both the Gleaners and the Redwood Food Bank to close that financial gap.
Great. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, quick question now that we're bringing a full circle. Funding, yeah, we need money. And I know, Gleaners, you're transitioning to a new facility, but I don't know actually the status of that. And I see everyone in the room here could probably give me an update. So if there were needs in permitting assistance or building out the new site and stuff like that, I hope these considerations will be part of that talk and, and in addition to whatever ongoing funding we need to get the food supplies in here and keep them running. I know for a fact the Gleaners are kind of in a transitional mode and may need some, some level of appropriate support to get into the newer, bigger facility.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I wanted to also think of another aspect that's, it could be beneficial to folks where they live at in our rural communities. We can look at our own personal gardens. I know that there's community gardens as well, but that's something that people can also do. But I think the hard part would be the training. And so I know when I went to Colorado in July, they had a group called Denver Urban Gardens. Now, I'm not sure if we have something like that yet. I do know that we have community gardens. Not community gardens, I'm sorry. What do you call those? You know, when they have the food markets, the market?
Farmers markets.
Farmers markets, yeah, where you can trade and do all that. Sorry, I repeated myself on that. But, you know, those are other areas. I'm not sure if they're allowed to receive CalFresh for payment on those, and they are.
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's another aspect that keeps it local. But, you know, I'll get some more, I have the information for the gardens and see if we we have someone local that already does that or has the capability because that could be another way to foster some of the gardens. The gardens can give them what they need there and then their dollars can be spent if they are low income on other things when it comes to using CalFresh or anything else. So...
NCO has the Gardens Project and so there are community gardens all around the county. You can sign up for a plot for the season. Unfortunately, now, we're kind of out of the season for a lot of food production and that's when people really struggle the most during the holidays and in the wintertime. Supervisor Spatier?
I believe that, I saw Bev's hand come up at one point or another and just wanted to make sure she had the chance to...
I was going to open it up for a public comment in just a minute. Okay, are we all finished here at the board? All right, well, one more thing.
Just one last, last comment. So, the Equal to CalFresh program, I think it's called TNAP, there's Tribal Native Assistance Program. So, CalFresh is for non-trivial communities and I think it's called TNAP is what they have for tribal communities. I've just seen that rolled out now. That's another program I know that hopefully all the seven tribes are looking at too. That's basically CalFresh, but on the tribal side.
So, I'll open it up for a public comment. I'm hoping Rachel can come up and talk about how we advertise all of our distribution days because I know that that memo floats around quite frequently. So, if anyone would like to come up and I'm going to ask Rachel to also first lead us off. Because you're staff, you don't have the three-minute time.
Sure, yeah, if you want to know where we post the food distribution list, which includes both the Gleaners, Redwood Empire Food Bank, any distribution that we're aware of out there in the community, it's posted on our Facebook page, which is Lake County Social Services. It's also reshared through a variety of different County of Lake Facebook pages. So, the main County of Lake Facebook page also reposts it. We put that list out once a month on the first of the month. The distributions can change, so we do always recommend people double-check with the distribution site before they drive all the way there, if it's a long way from where you're coming, to make sure the distribution truly is occurring. And for any of our community organizations out there doing a distribution, if you want to get ahold of me and let me know about your distribution, if it's not on the list, my number is 707-995-4290. Other questions?
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your participation in our discussions, too.
Any other public comment? Did you want to come up, Bev?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of corrections. Excuse me, I frogged. The Clear Lake Gleaners was organized August 8th, 1951. Okay, so, that's okay. The information was given to you and it was not correct, okay? Supervisor Green, for your information and everybody else's. This man behind me, Juan Dominguez, will be on the Finley site around 3:30 in the morning on November 16th. And the volunteers start showing up shortly after that to load the trucks, go to the outlying sites. They will leave the property there in Finley at 5:30 so that they make the distribution drop-offs at all the sites. So, the distribution can start at 8 o'clock or earlier if we happen to be ready. In Finley, we know we're going to really be bombarded with people this time and we probably will start about 7:15. Volunteers start showing up anywhere from 5:30 until 7:00 and we're ready to go. I'd like to ask Juan or Kate if they have anything they want to add that I've missed. We definitely, definitely looking for funding and assistance with the development of the property that we purchased. We've had a few little problems right off the bat with the storms this last winter. They brought some trees down and just recently brought another big branch down on the fence. And I'm not quite sure whether that might be county, county tree in the right of way or... I'm, I'm, I mean, we took care of the brands that came down. We just haven't repaired the fence yet, but we are working towards that development. And it's a big project and it's very expensive, but we've totally outgrown the Finley site and need to get the people, the cars off the road during the distribution because they go all the way down past Scully Packing. And it's a tremendous, tremendous project there. So, thank you again for all your support. If there's any further questions, I'm here to answer them and so are my cohorts.
Thank you, Bev, for explaining the need. Thank you, both Allison and Bev, for kind of explaining your individual needs for our county. And I, you know, we each have discretionary funding and so I could, I would like to give $5,000 to each the Gleaners and the Redwood Food Bank for, as soon as possible, for the holiday season and encourage any of my other board members, if they have that in their budget, and sorry, I know you don't, to, to help with this incredible need throughout the holidays and into the winter season.
Thank you very much for that. We, I failed to mention the Reach and Resiliency Grant that we're working under right now. And we need to reach out to, to all of the tribes to pull them into the system. I'm not quite sure who and where to start, whether it's Moke or EJ or who, so that we can reach out to each one of the tribes here in the county and start pulling them into the distribution system and whatever else we can do to help get the food out to, to your people. Thank you. And the other thing is the fact that we do get donations from the grocery stores. And I don't want to slight Safeways, Brunner's Grocery Outlet, even Papa Murphy's. Through the Edible Food Recovery Program, we pick up food daily from those sites and that's distributed to the public as well as to the, well, it used to be called the Warming Shelter. I'm not quite sure what it's called, but we supply them anywhere from 300 to 400 pounds of food a week. So, the food is going out there. Whatever we get, it goes out. Great, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
And I would say, reach out to each supervisor so that we can make sure to connect you to all the tribes all around the lake.
Any other public comment? Allison?
Um, I will just say we, because of the way the contracts work for Reach and Resiliency, we have the same grant here in Sonoma County and working with our local tribes to get food security out. So, of course, Gleaners would be connecting with Lake County tribes, but if there's any way that, you know, we can help with how we're doing things in Sonoma County, we could certainly offer up just our best practices thus far in partnering with tribes. So, we've been doing that work for about a year and a half already. And so, if we can be of any assistance in setting that up or what it looks like, because maybe Bev has mentioned before, it didn't come with additional food. It came with funding on how to get food to rural and remote and tribal places, but it didn't actually help with the amount of food. And so, that can be tricky, but again, we're happy to share how we've done that so, so far in Sonoma County.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other public comment? We have anyone in the Zoom room? Yes. We have a hand up. Looks like it's also from, yeah, our, from Redwood Empire Food Bank.
Hello, everybody. I'm not sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Is that David?
Yes, it is. Thank you. So, first of all, thank you very much for having the Redwood Empire Food Bank at your meeting this morning. There's just a couple of things I want to say very briefly, which is, one, the Redwood Empire Food Bank comes in peace. And I know in all the complexity of all the public work that you do, it's always nice to have allies. It's nice to be able to, in some section of the work you're trying to do, just to know that you have a willing participant that's willing to, to help and not make it difficult. So, I want to say that the Redwood Empire Food Bank is enthusiastic, enthusiastic about improving the lives of everyone in, in Lake County. And so, we know that there are resources available at the state level for sure that we have not been able to draw down to help in Lake County. And so, we are eager to be able to do that. The second thing is that we imagine that there are, and know that there are resources far beyond our reach that perhaps those of you in the public sector can understand both from a state and federal standpoint, and we're not really privy to those kinds of conversations, but to the extent that you can help connect us to those resources, we are more than happy to do the work and we will continue to be there. The only thing is that we can't do it without financial support because we do everything, but the only thing we don't do is print money. So, we need to fuel our trucks, pay our staff, buy the food, et cetera. So, with your help, we can, we can do whatever you would like us to do happily. Thank you for your time and interest. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, and David, before you go, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, I'm David Goodman and I'm a hunger relief worker here at the Redwood Empire Food Bank and the CEO.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Am I up to the microphone, Joan?
Joan Moss. I go to the Kelseyville Thrift Shop every Monday and local ranchers come and drop off produce that's totally free. And when I do go to the senior center in Kelseyville, there's always free produce and free bags of spaghetti, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a lot of interchange and I do want to make a comment that a friend of mine from Elim has been disenfranchised for 20 years and she has property at Elim and she's not, she's not enrolled, but she's, she is ethically Native American. So, does she qualify or not? That's what I'm wondering.
For which aspect?
I'd rather not say she's a member of Elim.
No, no, I'm not talking about who it is. Which aspect do you mean? For CalFresh or for food, you know, or which Gleaners or Redwood Empire Food?
I don't know.
Basically qualify for those because it's for anybody, right? I would think. And then, if, since they're disenfranchised, which, you know, I, that's, I can't stand that, but it is what it is, they can apply for CalFresh because they obviously wouldn't have the certification to apply for food, the Sherwood Valley Food Distribution Program. So, I would think they qualify for everything else and have that option for CalFresh.
Recently, I was going to the bank and the sidewalk was blocked with all this food. And I went in, did my business and came back and I was interviewed before I got my food. They had to know who I am, where I live, how many children in the home. They practically didn't ask for my birthday, but it was really quite amazing how they document when you do get the food. People who aren't really sure of their documentation would have a harder time getting the food. That happened to me and I, being a journalist, I asked her, why do you need to know my name before I pick up a bag of apples? And she said, it's the government. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else in the chambers or the Zoom room that would like to give a public comment?
Just, just to add, you know, I'm pretty familiar with, with the tribes in my district, so I probably know who Joan's talking about. And I can touch base with, with the Gleaners about the tribes in my district because I'm pretty familiar with who you need to get ahold of and that. So, I'll talk with, with you all offline here.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the board and it sounds like we have consensus to continue this work.
Right.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, and just, I was going to add, if I could.
Sure.
I'm doing it on the fly. The challenge is there. I'm meeting the challenge on the fly. So, I will, I appreciate the discretionary contribution of 5K each. I will do that as well for my discretionary funds. So, 5K to Gleaners, 5K to Redwood Food Bank. And for the Gleaners, I want to allocate an additional 5K to help with some of that planning that needs to happen at the new site. I know you're going to incur some hard costs for site maps and stuff like that. So, I'll allocate 5K for those startup costs for the new site.
Thank you Supervisor Green, that's wonderful. So, to the, to the Gleaners and Redwood Empire Food Bank, we deeply appreciate everything that you do and please look out for an email. We're just going to need to have a little bit of paperwork and then we will get you those checks as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
I will see what I can squeeze out of mine. It's almost completely spoken for, pledged for, but if I can, if I can squeeze, you know, something out, it may not be five, but at least maybe half, I'll see what I can do, you know.
Thank you. Awesome.
And I think I have enough in my funds, so...
Perfect.
I'll do the five to five, too, so I'm pretty sure.
Awesome. Who needs a fundraiser? All you have to do is come for a proclamation. So, this, I just, I really hope that you can see how much your service means to all of our constituents and all of our districts and countywide. And so, whatever we can do to continue this partnership and having these conversations and sitting down together is how we move forward. And so, I appreciate the meeting that we got together just recently and the calls that we've been on and the outreach. And I know that we can achieve a lot more as we go down the road together. So, thank you so much. And I think we'll just take a short break. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll come back at 10:10. Okay, 6.7, 9:30 a.m. Hearing, consideration of appeal of notice of nuisance and order to abate. N O N O T A, nota for 11630, Borough Way, Clear Lake Oaks, APN 03526233. Property owner, Aura Thomas, AKA Aura Palma. Hearing requested by Arlene Fox on behalf of Ms. Thomas. We have our Community Development Director, Myra Turner. I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're with Johanna. Not anymore. Good morning. Myra Turner, Community Development Director. As they get that up and running, I, the item that you have before you today is another abatement of a same property that you have, had already approved the assessment for last year. Just as a note, our staff did receive a request from the property owner for a continuance for four weeks from today. She and her, her mother, the representative, were both unable to make today's meeting.
So, this is, this situation looks identical to the situation we dealt with a year ago with this abatement. And so, I will just ask the board if that's something we want to wait on for four months, but I'm not in favor of that.
For, four weeks?
I'm sorry, four weeks. Supervisor Crandall, it's in your district?
No, I don't want to wait on it. Actually, I was going to ask as a, as a, we'll move forward today, right? Yeah. The other thing is, is I know it's a little, it might, it's germane. When we have nuisance, nuisances like this, is there a possible way, and I'm looking at Lloyd, to look at something in regards to, with continuous nuisances, like maybe some sort of asset forfeiture or something like that? Because obviously, I mean, these are egregious and we're just going to continue to charge their tax, you know, their taxes. And it's just, it's a burden because in the end, it's obvious that we're not going to get that unless it's a sale, so...
Like a receivership situation?
Something, yeah. I mean, I know that there's situations in different counties where they do, you know, asset forfeitures for nuisances, but I, I don't know. I figured I'd ask Lloyd.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
A discussion later.
And staff can certainly look into that as a possible option. I know that Chapter 13 of the Lake County Code offers a specific set for these types of hearings, for a specific set of options for your board as far as the decisions go, and one of which is what the staff is recommending as far as, in relation to the notice of nuisance in order to abate. Also, your board may confirm the assessment and direct staff to record a notice of lien against the property. Generally silent as to, you know, specific actions in relation to receivership, but staff could certainly look into that. But staff could certainly look into that. And that's kind of where we are as far as the nuisance abatement code or the nuisance ordinances under the Lake County Code.
And is staff wanting to move forward sooner than later?
Yes, the request is totally, or granting that request is totally up to the board. We're ready to move forward today.
Right, and I agree with that, so.
Consensus from the board?
Yes.
Okay. All right, continue with your presentation.
And I'm happy to turn this presentation over to our code enforcement supervisor, Norman Joey Valdez. And we also have our chief building official, Bill Collins, here for any structural related code questions.
You are here to testify on this. With your right hand raised, do you solemn?
Just a moment. Do we have anyone out in the chambers or the Zoom room who is here to testify? Stand up. Everyone needs to swear in.
All right. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thanks.
Joan, did you say I do? If you want to give testimony, you have to say I do. Okay, we'll keep an eye on that.
Good morning, Board. My name is Norman Valdez. I am the Code Enforcement Program Supervisor. Today, we are here for a request for hearing or an appeal for 11630, Barrow Way in Clear Lake Oaks. Here are some property details, including the APN number, its zoning, and its approximate acreage. Here is a map showing the proximity to the lake. And it's right along Highway 20, along the scenic corridor as well. Attachment A in the packets you guys have provided is the request for a hearing. This is a quote from the request of healing. The property owner is incarcerated. This is known to Lake County Code Enforcement, District Attorney, Sheriff's Office, et cetera. County Council knows of this as well. This abatement is a conflict of interest for Lake County to handle. I want my abatement procedures transferred to Napa County. No previous of current proceedings in Napa. Sonoma and Mendocino both have conflicts of interest for property owner. Per the Sixth Eligible, Sixth Amendment Eligible, February 2023, my constitutional right to representation not being upheld. In light of this and my inability to be present in court proceeding, I request a transfer, end quote. The appeal discussion today. The appellant's reason as to why it is not in violation of the Lake County Code, the appellant is requesting a change of venue due to potential conflicts of interest by the hearing board. And this issue is the County of Lake. The hearing notice was mailed out on October 20, 2023. Here are site photos showing the posting of the notice, the notice of nuisance in order to abate on the fence of the property. This was taken, or these photos were taken September 5, 2023. This is a follow-up site inspection on October 11, 2023, showing that the fence had fallen. And we were able to end up going onto the property and seeing the state of the property. The notice that was issued against this property was for numerous violations of the Lake County Code. In particular, this was a vacant structure ordinance for Chapter 5, Section 31, through, section, sorry. Chapter 5, Article 7, Section 5-33 and Section 5-34, which is the standards for boarding up a vacant structure. The other nuisances that was referenced on the property were attractive and dangerous nuisances, conditions dangerous to human life, unsafe, detrimental to the public use of land not maintained contrary to provisions of Chapter 21, unsightly appearance visible from the scenic corridor or neighboring properties, inoperable vehicles or parts thereof. And then the securing of the vacant structure. These are recent photos from November 1, 2023, showing that progress has not been made and that the building is still unsecure. Here are photos of the doors with no locks. Here are some photos of their attempt to board up the property. They put tarps on a hole in the roof in the main dwelling and a tarp on the side of the garage. Staff recommends the following. Staff recommends the board to uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate and direct staff to move forward with the abatement process within 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. When was the last time this came before us? What was the date? I think it was a year ago, less than a year ago, more than a year ago, I mean.
So the last hearing was around 9/2/22.
Okay. And the fire damage, I know last time there was fire damage on both structures. And is it the same or have there been more fires?
So there has not been any more fires. The abatement last time was to clean up that fire damaged material and garbage, inoperable vehicles, and stuff like that. The orders were not to board up the house or secure the dwellings or demo the structures.
Okay. And so what would be the process for continuing, to remedy the situation? Because we've got half burned, at least one half burned structure.
So we're looking to end up boarding up both of the structures underneath the building code and doing that up to the standards that code enforcement wants to do. Chapter 5 also allows for if, sorry. After the boarding up of a structure by the County of Lake, if premises surrounding the vacant structure again contains debris, rubbish, waste, or excess vegetation, the county building official may, without further notice to the owner, remove or may proceed to remove debris, rubbish, waste matter, or excess vegetation and recover cost.
What about a burned structure? How long do we allow it to just be boarded up?
So after the boarding up by the County of Lake, it will allow for six months for them to end up trying to rehabilitate the structure and get it into compliance. If they do not make the steps as requested or as they need to, to either rehabilitate the structure or demo the structure, we will move forward with our proceedings underneath the vacant structure ordinance to demo the structure and secure the main dwelling.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall, this is in your district. Do you have anything else to talk about or add? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, what's the ability under the ordinance to address the pool? You know, dysfunctional pool that poses a hazard. Obviously, hopefully people aren't trespassing on the property. But boarding up the house would necessarily mitigate that hazard. Whereas fencing the property or making sure the entire property was inaccessible may be. But I don't know, you know, if we're red tagging a building, I don't know if we look at other potential hazards on the property that need to be secured.
So the vacant structure ordinance allows us to erect a fence around the property to secure access. And if it is not maintained, the same thing as if the property, again, starts to accumulate garbage and stuff like that, we may go in there and make sure that the maintenance on the fence is adequate.
Yeah, the fence has been put up, but it's been knocked down. And how long has the property owner been incarcerated? And how long is the term? Because this obviously is trespassers.
I do not know how long she was, she's been incarcerated.
Supervisor Swatier?
Yeah, so, second time coming around. And appreciate looking for other options to make sure we don't see this a third time around. I know I've had some discussions privately with Director Turner as well as our tax collector, Patrick Sullivan. I want to, it's unfortunate that we have to take responsibility for other people's actions and have to clean up after them. But I just want to make sure that we get our direct charges on there. Our last direct charges will go on there. It's still possible, but they're not on the tax roll as we speak. That would be $17,000 that, right now, they're paid up on their taxes. That's what I was checking on when I met with Patrick Sullivan. But I think that we need to get those $17,000 on the tax roll. We need to get whatever the cost is of this on the tax roll. And then this is a perfect type of situation where we need to take the strong arm approach of foreclosing on the house if that does not get paid in a matter of time. Because we are allowing the people who live around that community to be subjected to that type of neighborhood. And that's just not appropriate at all. And since this is the second time, I think that we look for that type of strong arm approach. I know I had that conversation with Patrick Sullivan. And I would suggest that staff has that continued conversation rather than waiting for three to five years where you can do a tax auction. Let's not subject that community to any further nuisance such as this. And let's see how that options, that option could work out for us. And it's a much slimmer timeline.
Thank you. I appreciate that you brought that to our attention, that you didn't see it there. Patrick has since walked us through the process. It's a two-step process that I was not aware of. So we're actually following up with our finance staff to see if that was done. And if not, we'll get it done immediately. Additionally, there were citations that were issued to this property as well. The board has expressed its support that not only do we post non-odas, but notice of violations. And Supervisor Valdez can speak to that as well.
On December 15, a citation of $15,000 was issued against the property.
That's 2022, right?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I wanted to expound on what Supervisor Sabatier said because there's other properties as well that, you know, are put in situations that are repetitive. And I know at times there are communities that basically are just making reports because they have an issue with their neighbors or whatever. But there's situations where like this, the community at large that's around, they have been affected by this, not only by rodents and the risk of fire, things like that. So it's, the traffic, all of those things are important to mitigate. And situations where we can have a strong arm approach would really be beneficial. And also for the other areas that this is in. And so we can have some sort of template or something like that. You know, I don't want to be overly, you know, aggressive for some neighborhoods because some are just basically neighbors disputing or whatever the case may be. So it's based on code enforcement's, you know, their threshold and their level of what's compliant with the code and whatnot. So I know, and I know you all get the complaints. And sometimes you can determine what's just kind of thrown out there and what is not. So just wanted to mention that.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, this will be a question for County Council. Don't necessarily need an immediate answer. But this is an incarcerated property owner. Some form of due process right attaches this hearing. And although clearly no transfer to a different venue was conducted here, the question might be, to what extent have we confirmed proper notice through the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to the appellant? I don't know if you normally do certified mail. And having dealt with incarcerated people in a previous role in social services with juvenile dependency hearings, it can get messy, you know. But I just have a feeling that in addition to everything else in this normal evidence package, I'm going to have some questions about due process and whether any attempt was made to arrange a Zoom appearance with CDCR for this hearing.
So the hearing notice or hearing request was turned in by the property owner's mother, who was identified as her representative on that form. Our correspondence of notification with hearing was also directed to the representative. And we do know that the property owner was noticed because she's the one that requested the continuance.
Does the ordinance allow, I mean, how do we designate a representative? How do we allow a hearing to continue based solely on the statements made by a representative or some purported representations on behalf of the appellant by the representative? I know it's not a criminal proceeding, so I'm not looking for that same level of due process. But I don't have any understanding of the limits of authority of a representative standing in the absence of the appellant herself.
I'll defer to County Council for a code-related answer. What we received was the notification from Ms. Palma with the phone number saying in the message phone, her mother, Arlene Fox, circled Representative Arlene Fox. And then the letter was from the property owner. So in staff's view, we get these all the time, letters requesting representation. So long as it's signed by the property owner, we move forward.
Okay. I will open it up for public comment. Come on up. And you were sworn in, correct? Okay. So you can state your name and you'll have three minutes.
Darlene Harris, and I'm one of the property owners on Barrow. It's definitely a nuisance. It's, there is still people going in and out of that place. And during the day, I do have a tenant there right now living. And she says that she can even hear it at night. So there is still people going on there. It has graffiti all over where you can see in the pictures also. That has not really been taken down. It has the burnt area, which I feel is a very threat to people. And with the pool and everything, that it's a danger. And so I'm glad that you're going to be putting up a fence. And then all the trash and everything has not changed since I bought the property. And the other problem we always are having is because she a lot of times will be blocking the roadway. She's also diverted the, there's a spring with the water. I've been told it used to run underneath the road. Now it's running over the road and destroying the road. And I have concerns on that also. So I'm glad that you're taking a strong view on this and we'll be doing something about it because it definitely is a nuisance.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the Zoom room? I've seen anyone. Okay. We'll close public input and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Crandall?
One clarifying question. I know the fine that was spoke about, that was for the last, correct? The $15,000 fine? Will there be, will you be doing another one for the same amount or?
So the notice of violation was for, was issued nine, sorry. Was issued 9/2/2022. And then the citation was issued against the property that December. We could technically follow up with that same NOV because the violations are still occurring on the property. We are just putting forward a new notice of nuisance in order to abate, to allow us to move forward with the boarding up and securing of the property.
And those costs will be brought back to us to assess?
I'm talking about the fine or the extra notice of violation, correct? We put in a $15,000 one on there. That was the one I was referring to. We'll do another one. This is another incident. So it should be another one added on top of that for the violation.
So the violations continue to exist. There was no cleanup after we issued that NOV. So those fines are reoccurring. We, for the department, have capped ourselves on how much we will charge a property as to not make it unjustifiable or like just to keep prices going up.
Supervisor Swatier?
So I'll just say that I feel, I understand the reasons why, and I hear from the neighbors. But us building fences for private properties we don't own just seems a little weird. That's why I'm really pushing for put those fines on there. What's the timeline? And obviously, that would be working with County Council. What's the timeline that we have to give them to be able to pay? What's the timeline that we have to give them to be able to pay off those fines? And if they don't pay them off, we foreclose, we take the house, and we do what we need to at that point. But right now, building fences on, how many different properties are we looking at potentially that, all around the lake? I don't know that that's the business I want to see us involved in versus holding people responsible. I don't want to be responsible for their properties. So I'm a little nervous about that. I get it that that doesn't prohibit the traffic that is occurring, but I'd love to see how that can be done in a very limited way and not a, become a normal thing for us to do.
Okay. Are we ready for action?
All right. Madam Chair, I move to move forward with the staff recommendation for the board to uphold the notice of nuisance and order to abate and direct staff to move forward with the abatement process within 30 days if the violations are not abated by the property owner. That's the recommendation, right? Proper recommendation, right?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So do we also want to give direction to look at other options?
Yes.
With County Council?
Yes.
Do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right.
And then, in that way, folks that are from the community can come and give us input. That way, we're not so nervous about fences. Maybe if we get a lot of people from communities saying we would like our tax dollars to go towards these properties to build fences, then maybe we have that input that could help with that, right?
Okay, we have a little bit of time, so we'll move on to 7.7. Consideration of proposed findings of facts. Madam Chair? I thought our next one was 11. Oh, we missed.
Madam Chair, we have a 10 o'clock.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Okay, okay. 10 o'clock. The 10 o'clock.
We didn't forget about you, David.
So, sorry.
8.0.
Going down there. Sorry, David.
No problem.
I got a lot of reminders. 10:00 AM Assessment Appeal Hearing, sitting as the Board of Equalization. 8.1. Consideration of Withdrawal on the Following Assessment Appeal Applications. A, Number 12-2022, Charles Belleg, and B, 18-2022, Laura Parrish, and C, 01-2022, Yvonne and Richard Reba, and D, 14-2021, Safeway. And we have David Schwinger from the Assessor's Office.
Yeah, these are, one was protective appeal, the other ones, they don't wish to continue. They see the market value is what their property is.
Hey, any board comment on that? Any public input? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Do we have to go through each one? Is there, if they withdrew, do we need to actually take action, or?
The motion can be taken as a group under the, with a group of properties under the same agenda item. In this case, it would be 8.1.
Could I just make a motion to approve the withdrawals and then just read the rest?
Yes, you may.
Then I move to approve the withdrawals of the assessment appeals, including Number 12-2022, Charles Belleg, B, 18-2022, Laura Parrish, C, 01-2022, Yvonne and Richard Reba, and D, 14-2021, Safeway.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 8.2. Consideration of Stipulation on the Following Assessment Appeal Applications. A, Number 03-2022, Elizabeth Robinson, and B, 08-2022, Lynn.
LaHooness? There you go.
Okay.
You want to say it right.
And C, 04-2022 through 07-2022, Jessica Spencer, and D, 17-2022, Jason Tapia, and E, 13-2021, Safeway, and F, 13-2022, Suba and Nirmala Naidu.
Yes, so, so we worked with all the applicants on these. Each had their own issues. I don't know if the board wants to go through each one or do them as a group, but that was, one was that there was a parent-to-child transfer. The property was, the parent was an architect who had delusions of grandeur, so when the child received the property, it was in complete disrepair. We did appraisal as, originally as though the property was in good shape. This is Appeal 03-2022 for Robinson. She gave us a list of all the repairs needed. We looked at the property on the false condition that it was in marketable sale in the condition she planned to get it in, and then took a cost to cure to come up with a stipulated value. She also presented an appeal. The appeal was for probate for the property. The problem with the appeal, or the appraisal that was submitted, was that the appraiser took properties that needed repair, and then for the final valuation, removed more, so they were double-dipping into the repairs. So, that's why the fee, or the probate appraisal was not accepted. The next one we looked at was 08-2022. That was for Lynn. What we didn't realize when we did the appraisal of this property, that lot that she bought had a deed restriction that she could not build on it. It was not connected to the water system, and they would not allow it. She bought it from her neighbor. We did, it was enrolled at a higher value than she bought it for, because that's what the market sale is of a property in that neighborhood with the same restriction. Then, appeals for Spencer, those are 04 through 07. So this was a package where a property owner had a bunch of rentals and properties in disrepair, there's four of them, and was looking to sell them. The realtor looked at them and said, "You can't sell them in this condition. They need these repairs," which the owner did not want to do. The realtor then bought them. Spencer is the realtor. She bought them, and it didn't qualify as a group sale, and it wasn't an arms-length transaction because it never reached the market. We valued these just in average condition. We did not know the original condition of the properties. I went through with each property with her, and we came to comparables for each one to come up with what market value should have been at the time of transfer. All right. Appeal 17-2022, that's Mr. Tapia. So when he reported on his preliminary change of ownership, he bought a licensed manufactured home. On the preliminary change of ownership form, when we valued it, it stated that the mobile home was not included in the sale. So we took his sale price and enrolled it. So we figured that's the value of the improvements and that. The reality was, the manufactured home was part of the sale, so we had to back out the licensed manufactured home, since they are paying taxes to the state. They don't go on the tax roll. All right. So that's what the stipulated value on that. Safeway provided a fee appraisal. So, you saw earlier on Item 8.1, a withdrawal. That is the actual, the parcel. One unit is Safeway and CVS with all the adjoining smaller suites. This is to account for the vacancies. There's about 25% vacancy on the CVS side parcel, and that's what this fee appraisal submitted represents, and showed market conditions, and we accepted that as the value, as a temporary reduction in value. The last one, 13-2022, Mr. Nandu submitted a fee appraisal. His tenant had left the parcel. He was looking to market it and sell it, and he submitted that as the valuation. We accepted that with the comparables, met the criteria in property tax rule, so we offered a stipulation at his fee appraisal value.
And Vice Chair Simon, if I may?
Go ahead. County Council?
Your board may want to consider taking the oath at this juncture for all the items under, well, 8.1 through 8.6, in light of, you know, substantive information being provided by Mr. Schwinger in the Assessor Recorder's Office, so that anyone who may wish to testify for Items 8.1 through 8.6 be taken under oath at this point.
Okay.
Including the ones that, the information already being provided.
All right, we're going to administer the oath. Go ahead.
So if anyone in the public is here for assessment appeals, can you please stand and raise your right hand?
Or online?
Yeah, or if anyone's online, raise your hand.
I'm going to pass this back.
Thanks. All right. So do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And for the board, I forgot to mention, Rich Ford is not here. He is working with, there's a presentation on microfiche and megabyte to integrate them. So that is very exciting, so that's really important, so that's why he's.
Okay. So, does the board have any questions or comments on this? Supervisor Green?
I do have a question on the Safeway. The decline purportedly to COVID-19 vacancies. The CVS property, those vacancies, several of them predate COVID-19, and to my understanding, limited as it may be, they're not actively running out some of those units, and have actually devoted some to nonprofit uses. So is it accurate to value based on some allegedly temporary reduction in value based on COVID-19, or is there something else in play with that property that indicates a more permanent reduction value has been artificially introduced by Safeway?
No, that, the appraisal doesn't look at that portion of goodwill in the appraisal. What they were looking at was the overall, well, the vacancies were number one, but with that, to get new leases at that time period was stagnant. So that was the issue. They actually, the appraisal actually stated for the current value is it's above market value. I mean, the temporary reduction is not for the year. So, so they looked at just that time period that they said they could not get new tenants in there, is what they were looking at.
Anything else from the board? Okay, I will open it up for people that have been sworn in. No?
No, just for people that have been sworn in.
Yeah, yeah. For people that have been sworn in. If you're willing to come up to the podium, you can state your name and have three minutes. Anyone? If you're here for this item. Right there. The podium right there with the microphone.
Right.
Right here.
All right, I'm Derek Groff.
We'll get to you.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll call you short.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you want to say anything, Jason?
I've reached an agreement with Mr. Schwinger.
Okay, come to, and then state your name.
My name is Jason Tapia.
Okay.
And I have a stipulation agreement with Mr. Schwinger here. I just want to make sure that it's processed here and not denied. I got the big, bold font here, failure to appear without notice may result in my appeal being denied, so out of an abundance of caution, and I just want to make sure that that is processed as agreed upon. And I think it is, so if it is, then I'll be out of your courtroom.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Have a nice day, everybody.
Anyone else in this item here? Okay, then I'll close public input and bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I'll give it a shot. I move to approve the stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications. Number 03-2022, Elizabeth Robinson, 08-2022, Lynn LaJenness, 04-2022 through 07-2022, Jessica Spencer, 17-2022, Jason Tapia, who just left the building, 13-2021, Safeway, 13-2022, Suba and Nirmala Naidu.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. 8.3. Consideration of Request by the Appellant to Continue the Following Assessment Appeal Applications. A, Number 14-2022, Douglas Messick, and B, 19-2022, Stefan and Diane Holstrom, and C, 16-2021, Tesla Energy, and D, 02-2022, Good Vibes Only LLC, and E, 22-2021, Worldmark to the May 14th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting at 11:00 AM. I'll pass this back to you. 10:00 AM. Did I say that? What did I say?
11:00.
Oh, sorry. 10:00 AM.
You really wanted to get to about 11:00 AM.
I did. I will pass this to Mr. Schwinger now.
Yeah, these are all taxpayer requests except for 19-2022, Mr. Stefan Holstrom. Was in conversation with him. He did submit an appraisal yesterday that was today's value. And the value, when we're dealing with taxpayers who don't understand the law, then I'm working with him, giving him comps to show him what the January 1st, 2022 value and what we can use, and hopefully we'll have a nice stipulation for May.
Do we have anyone that needs to be sworn in for this item? Is anyone in the chambers here for 8.3, wishing to give public input? Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the continuance of the following assessment appeal applications. Number 14-2022, Douglas Messick, 19-2022, Stephen and Diane Holstrom, 16-2021, Tesla Energy, 02-2022, Good Vibes Only LLC, 22-2021, Worldmark to the May 14th, 2024 Board of Supervisors Meeting at 10:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to 8.4. Consideration to Deny the Assessment Appeal Application Number 20-2022, Quail Run Fitness for Failure to Return Notice of Hearing. I'll pass this over to you, Mr. Schwinger.
Yeah, Johanna didn't receive the return that they would be appearing. I haven't had contact with the applicant. They had been on a Prop 8 since 2008, which was removed because the property was listed for 2.4 million in 2021. So we've had no contact with the applicant, assuming that they, since they didn't contact the board or the assessor, they don't wish to continue.
Do we have anyone in the chambers from Quail Run, or in the Zoom room? No? Okay. No public comment on that, then I'll close it and bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I will move to deny assessment appeal application Number 20-2022, Quail Run Fitness for Failure to Return Notice of Hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 8.5. Consideration of Timeliness of Assessment Appeal Applications, 15-2022, and 16-2022, Javier Villalobos.
Yeah, so I'll give you some handouts here, just one moment.
Okay. Looks like we've got him here, so we'll get you sworn in in just a minute. Actually, Johanna, do you just want to swear him in, right?
He's already.
Oh, he's already sworn in. That's right.
I tried to, he didn't answer phone or email. On the application, this, the sheet you have first in front of you has the notices. Those are actually printed two days before, unless it's a week, unless it's a Friday, then we had three days to give time for mailing. He did say that he did receive the notice in his application, but the notice did not come in the mail. come in the mail from two months later and filed his appeal. The next, the third page starts with Property Tax 305. And if you go, my notes here, down to part, Part D, time and filing. And that is on the last page. And then number four, an applicant may file, be filed within 60 days of receipt of the notice of assessment or within 60 days of the mailing date of a tax bill, whichever is earlier when the taxpayer does not receive the notice of assessment described in Section 619 of the Revenue and Taxation Code, at least 15 calendar days prior to the close of the regular filing period. The applicant must file an affidavit from the application declaring under penalty of perjury that the notice was not timely delivered. So he did get the notice and it's, the assessor has no view on this, whether, you know, it's the board's decision whether you say it's a timely application or it's not a timely application, depending on his note on what he put in there. And if it is viewed timely, we set it for May. Otherwise, you deny it. It's your call on how the board would like to handle this.
Supervisor Spatier?
I do have a question, and it's me being nitpicky. Because under that Part D that we were just reading, under the filing, it talks about...
So if it's, if you say, I never received a notice, you can, and you file on an affidavit to that, stating under penalty of perjury, I never received a notice, you can file on your tax bill. And if you, on this case, he said, I got the notice, but it didn't come timely.
So that's not really where I'm going with it.
Okay.
You have a date on this notice and you're telling us when it was mailed, but I don't see proof of when it was mailed. And I know that that's what he might be stating, is that he received it at a specific timeframe. And so there's kind of a printed and dated 5/13.
Correct.
Somewhere there's a big gray area with zero evidence. And then him saying he received it, I think it said 8/20 or something like that.
Right. So the notice...
And so I'm just wondering, do you have a tracking of data of when things are mailed? And is that possible to...
No. I mean, I, so when we, the date, I went back and reprinted this notice. I printed, I'm the one who prints and mails these notices. There was 420 notices that day that were printed. They were supplementals, there are a whole bunch of stuff. So, and then we fold them and deliver them to the mailroom. I mean, so we don't do, these are not certified mail. These are just bulk mail that go out. No, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't keep receipts of the postage.
Supervisor Green?
And so looking at Page 3, where there's a handwritten note saying the postmark date is 8/10, other than that handwritten note, there was no photocopy provided of the mailed envelope in which the notice was sent?
No, there was not.
But there's still the allegation here within this. Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Come on up. You can state your name.
Good morning, I am Javier Villalobos. I'm here today to, for an assessment appeal, application that I submitted for some properties that I own. I did not get the information on time, so I went ahead and submitted it in appeal. And I remember calling, calling in to inform the assessor's office that I was going to go ahead and submit an appeal, but I had gotten it in the mail late. And I remember on the posted stamp that I received, I was still in qualification to submit an appeal for both my properties that, in my opinion, are, were overvalued for what they, for what the value was assessed for them. So I submitted the appeal to see if I could get those reassessed to a price that I think matches the description of both the properties. And for one of the properties, sorry, I was, let's see, I got the information on my phone, is for parcel number 14239109000. It's on 16211 Tishatang Road in Lower Lake, California. For the, for this particular property, it is an older mobile home. Unfortunately, the home is just a one-bedroom, one-bath. So it's actually a very small mobile home that's still sitting on blocks.
Sorry to interrupt, we're just going over for the timeliness. So your testimony today is to testify that you got, the notice showed up two months after the date on the envelope?
Uh huh.
Correct. That's what you testified.
Oh, oh, okay.
And that's what they're inside, and then we'll hear it in the next hearing.
Oh, in the next hearing?
But, yeah, but leave your contact address so I can get ahold of you, so we can discuss this.
Okay. Okay. Perfect.
Do you know when you received the notice?
I don't, but I do have the envelopes at home. I just wasn't sure. I was in, actually on vacation when I was, so that's why he probably couldn't get ahold of me. I was in Mexico. My grandmother had a stroke, so I went over there and to help assist my father take care of her, you know? So I haven't really been in county as, as in the last, since September. So...
So you were gone for an extended period of time?
Yeah, I was gone. So that's why I wasn't too sure what, I thought this was for appeal for the actual assessments, not for the, for the timeliness. So, but I do have all the documentation at home with the envelopes and, and when I received them. Because I do remember I gave them a call here and when I told them about the assessment, they told me on the phone that I could send it in. It was still, I was still eligible to go ahead and submit my, my assessment.
Okay. Mr. Schwanger, did you have something to add?
The other applicant, if the board feels with this vacation that he wasn't in the timeframe, I gave you Property Tax Rule 305.5. Part D states that the application, you have three years to file on the base year value. So even if you miss, the supplemental assessment is, application can be amended by the board to just go to the regular year, and we can handle that as a base year value in May.
Okay.
So that's another option that you have.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, so just to read the entirety of D4, the application must be filed with an affidavit signed under penalty of perjury that the notice was not timely received. And other than the handwritten note on Page 3, I don't see a sworn affidavit. So I'm wondering if I'm reading that correctly?
Yes.
You're not in receipt of any affidavit signed under penalty of perjury?
I believe he is under oath also at this moment in time.
He's under oath now. Yes. Yes.
Supervisor Spatier?
At this moment, there's two separate stories, and it's from 2022. I would love to see the conversation continue. Rather than make a call today to say, too late, because both of you are under oath, I'm going to say, I absolutely believe that you submitted those to be mailed, but you are not the postal person who processed the mail. And you are the recipient, and you're telling us under oath that it set a specific date. And so at one point, both of you were not involved in the processing of this mail and how it got to its final destination. And so I'm going to say, I believe the both of you. And I would love to see us continue the conversation and see what kind of reassessment, if anything, comes out of it.
Okay.
Okay. Senior District?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
So it's continuing.
Can you make a motion to continue it to May as a valid appeal?
So moved.
And let's make sure we, you both connect.
May 14th. At 10:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, we'll see you in May.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. 8.6, consideration of the following assessment appeal application. Number 09 dash 2022, Grauff. And I'll pass this over to you, Mr. Schwanger, or we have our...
The applicant will go first. But on that, keep the, the one sheet, 305.5, the assumption of the base year value. That's what the applicant is contesting.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Derek Graff. And I'm here to appeal the parcel number 012014 dash 20. This is a 9.9 acre bare hilltop. And I've had multiple complaints with neighbor to the, what is it called? The, the, the name will come to me, but it's, because of a neighbor, we have a judgment on him that's also never been filed, that's never been collected, the amount owed for the death of nine calves of this nuisance neighbor. He's built, he's burned our hill down twice that we own. He has his illegal dump running on part of my property and lives in a cave with no septic system. He's threatened my life multiple times and is trespassing and hanging his dead animals from trees, not even on his property. And this neighbor is devaluing my property. So he's been vandalizing and cutting fences down. You guys may know him as Terry Allen Rucks. And I do wish to share photos with, with the board if you want to pass them around. Can we do that? The code enforcement, I've had multiple phone calls with them, emails with them, and nothing has been done. The following photos you can see are, are of him and his dump. And he has no septic system and claims to be living in a cave. So being this, having this as a neighbor is really causing a nuisance and devaluing all of the neighboring properties.
When did you purchase the property?
This was on a tax floor closure sale, I think it was two years ago. I think, I believe, two years ago.
Yeah, I'll go through that, please.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got one? Yeah. Thank you.
I was told that, that neighbor of the pictures you're receiving is well-known here. He came in with a trash can and a cane or something, a sword. So imagine living next to that.
Okay. Okay, so the issue, the applicant is appealing the property's base year value for the January 1st, 2022 lien date, and is requesting that this lower value be based on the behavior of his neighbor. The applicant has provided qualitative evidence with photos, but no quantitative evidence to support a lower value was presented to the assessor. The, we have 36,100 on the property tax rule. The applicant's opinion of value is 19,000. This is land only, there's no improvements being assessed. Description, the property is located north of Morgan Valley Road, east of Lower Lake. The property is 9.95 acres of vacant land. Base year valuation on 8/26/2021, the property was purchased at tax sale for 36,100 from Lake County Tax Collector. The sale price was enrolled as market value for the 2022 and 2023 tax year of 36,100. Divide that by 9.95 acres or $3,628 per acre. So the comparable sales, we have three of the sales that sold within, the comparable sales are the most appropriate for the market value of the subject property. And there are no sales of vacant land within five miles to justify a lower price per area. Assessor requests the assessment appeal board uphold the enrolled value based on the evidence of comparable sales. When we did look at the tax sale, it is on the low end of the market value. You have to go out a little further to get something that's down to 3,600 an acre, but there are sales there. So that's why his sales price was accepted at the tax sale. That's enrolled as the base year value. Rule 2, that says the value, value concept is attached and comparable sales approach is also attached for the sales. But for what, we had no evidence, I understand the neighbor's a nuisance. If there was any structures on the property, we would have removed them from the fire, but there are none. So we've asked that the board take this under submission and close session and make a determination. Thank you.
Close session?
Yeah.
No, or an open session?
You do it in open session?
Yes, yes. This is an appeal, so one of the options for the board is either to, I mean, grant the appeal or deny the appeal.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
So just a question, I'm not quite sure how valuations are done for specific things, but I know that in, especially around the 2020 time period, when these were last sold, the comparables that you're looking at are all above 20 acres. And we know that we created a industry here where 20 acres had a much higher level of valuation due to being able to do large cannabis grows. Is it acceptable to say that you can compare 20-plus acre property on a per acre valuation to a less than 10-acre property where that, that same level of potential is drastically different on how you can invest and get a return on your investment on a property? And I'm asking staff.
On this, no. At this time period, it's the opposite. You're having a liquidation sale at those, those are, the market was flooded. And for like cannabis growers, we're not, we're rapidly selling or liquidating. So one of our other stipulations was that the tenant left. So the price per acre now, as you're getting larger, was, is actually dropping.
Do you have any comps for under 20 acres?
Yes, but they were quite a bit higher price per acre. They were 4,000 to 6,000.
Which is typical for smaller parcels. It's a higher price per acre.
Yes, higher price per acre as you get tinier. This is a hilltop, so it's more of a rangeland parcel. But unless you're going, if you're going to cherry pick through the whole county to get something a lower price per acre, I just couldn't justify going than what's selling in the area. There weren't smaller parcels they're selling.
Okay.
That's why those were used.
Can I, can I reiterate, it's a non-buildable property on top of a bare hill next to...
Right, but your main argument is your neighbor.
Yes.
Right. And as much as I sympathize with that, that's temporary, and this is your base year, which establishes your, you're on, you're on the tax roll to contribute to our economy. And so I don't feel like this is a reason to, to have that reduction, because you do appreciate a lot of the benefits that these taxes pay for in our county, whether or not you live here year-round or you're going to build a house. We all have complaints about our neighbors, and this does seem egregious, and these are not pleasant pictures to look at, but I don't think that we can establish that as a standard for our basis setting. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. County Council?
Madam Chair, just, if I may, just briefly, I think what Mr. Schwinger was referring to is that your board does have the option to deliberate if your board chooses to do so in closed session after taking in all of the evidence at this hearing. So that is an option for your board prior to making a decision on this appeal.
And I'll just add to what the chair just said. I, I think that it is unfortunate that you can have neighbors that do devalue your property. But as you just saw, I think you were in the building when we were talking about our code enforcement abatement. We have potential tools available to deal with neighbors that devalue property, whether that's through code enforcement, through our share for the courts. Not pleasant avenues to go through, but definitely tools within the toolkit that can be used by property owners to ensure that their neighbors do not drop their property value.
I, I have contacted them probably about four to five times, and nothing's been done. So it's, you know, I understand your, I, what your ideas are, the value of the land, I understand that. But also, it is, keep in mind, it's a nine point nine acre, as he said, on top of a bear hill next to a unpermitted dump with, with the nuisance neighbor. So if it can go back, I mean, I saw that it was nineteen thousand dollars, what it was previously. I understand appreciation of value in property, whereas thirty-six, thirty-six one hundred is, is a little bit high for the circumstances that I am in, so.
If I can just, from the nineteen thousand would have been the previous owner's base year value that was established, that was years ago before there was a tax.
Yeah, and what year was that base year established?
I don't have the photo, but I believe it was in the eighties.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering if it was in the early two thousands when we had. Okay, so it was prior to that? Okay.
And while we are looking at an increase, the overall difference between what was done by the assessor's office and what the applicant's opinion is, is an extra like hundred and seventy-one dollars on the one percent, right?
Correct, and the, the value enrolled is what the applicant paid for the property.
Right.
But just the difference in what the actual annual taxes?
Yes, that's correct. One percent plus local bonds and?
Yeah.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, question for the appellate, and your to whom it may concern letter. You say the land in question is rural and uninhabitable. Does that mean it's just the slope and all that? You bought a piece of property that you knowing knew was uninhabitable, or you saying it's uninhabitable by virtue of the neighbor and the nuisance posed by that neighbor?
Well, it's uninhabitable as you can't put a house on it, there's no water on it. And yeah, it's a very small parcel, so there's, a septic would not even be permitted on that property.
So to the extent you're claiming that we should value the nuisance potential of the neighbor as a suppressive, as a suppressive element for the value of the property, if it's not developable and it's not inhabitable, that's kind of a stretch for me on a good day, so.
The parcel is, is that adjacent to your, your home parcel, is that correct?
Direct, well, no, I do not own, I'm landlocked by other people.
Okay.
There's no adjacent, no adjacent, no adjacent property I own.
Okay, so it's the one over from your property?
Direct neighbor, yes, the nuisance neighbor, yes.
Correct.
Terry Allen Rux is his name.
So a residential use would not be possible, but it could be developable in other aspects?
Possibly. Developable if, if my parcel.
Well, you understand the chair's comments, and I'm going to echo those comments.
Okay.
We were to.
I understand.
Do real estate valuation in this county based on every knucklehead that poses a temporary nuisance. That'd be an untenable situation.
Okay.
I have just one more thing. It was purchased on a tax default sale?
Correct, bid for assets.
And then in that, it was assessed prior to that, or was it based on, like, was there abatements, was there, it was off of taxes that weren't paid?
That's correct.
And so you're assessing the thirty-six thousand off the taxes that weren't paid?
Well, no, we're assessing, I don't know if the total taxes were just that, it was whatever the final auction value was.
Okay.
That he paid for the property.
And, and not off the, the value of the land per se?
Well, it's, it went up for bid, and he was the high bid winner at thirty-six thousand one hundred.
Okay. All right.
One more question.
Okay, if there's no further comments, we make a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to deny the following assessment appeal application, number zero nine dash two zero two two, Grauoff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Mr. Schwinger. That's our final assessment. We have an eleven AM item, that is our next item, six point eight. Presentation on CDBG Economic Development Grants and Planned Facade Improvements Program. This is brought to us by our admin office, and it looks like we have our deputy CAO, Ben Rinkelmann, coming up with Community Development Services, Jeff Lucas. Welcome to you both.
Thank you. Yep. Good morning, Board. Ben Rickleman, Deputy County Administrative Officer, and I'm joined by Jeff Lucas, Principal at CDS, here to give an update on the existing Community Development Block Grant Program, and then a proposed adjustment to it when the twenty twenty-four NOFA comes out in January. At least that's when we think it's going to come out. HCD sometimes operates on extended timeframes. Do you want to take it away?
Sure.
Okay.
This is just a. Sorry.
This is just a brief update for the board on what, what can be done with the CDBG funds. Eligible activities include community development, economic development, planning strategies. Under community development, code enforcement work, facade improvement programs, housing rehab, public improvements, public facilities and public services. Under economic development, we currently have, for example, a micro enterprise program where we provide direct technical assistance to startups and folks who are eligible for that program. It's a very active program, in fact, we're doing a workshop right now for it. Business assistance loans, those are like one percent fixed rate loans to local businesses that will create jobs or retain jobs. That's also been very active in the last couple of years. And then we haven't done one for Lake County for, for quite a while, and that's planning and strategies. For example, with that new housing coordinator, the county may consider doing, applying for funds up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars to do a housing strategy. You may have other sources of funds that are available, but you can use these funds as well to develop a, a strategy to implement housing countywide.
I just want to quickly add how HCD has the program set up in these activity buckets. So what we're talking about today is primarily the Economic Development Activity Bucket. So one of those buckets is over the counter. So basically, if you check the boxes, you get the money. The other one's competitive. For the twenty twenty-three NOFA, about eighty percent of the funds was over the counter, and only ten percent was competitive. So the county's going to go after the competitive, but we'll see what happens.
So the national objective for the program include setting up programs and operations that will assist low-income households and persons. That's the number one priority and national objective. And for a low-income to moderate-income household, an example would be for a family of four in Lake County, that family could not have made more than eighty-three thousand eight hundred dollars annually, including all sources of income. And so there's quite a few folks eligible in our area that can benefit from these programs, and they do. This other national objective is to mitigate slums and blighted areas. An example of that would be with the, like a facade improvement program or code enforcement programs can also be fitted in, fit into those, that national objective. And then urgent need is something that they very seldom use at the state level, even though these are federal funds, the state acts as a, I don't know what they act as, I can't think of the word right now, but they, the funds come from the feds to the state, and then they modify some of the requirements for the program. Urgent need, for example, was what we used for the water system on Cobb, for example. So they don't use it very often, but it is there occasionally for us. So we just wanted to let you know what we're being, what we've been doing, what the county's been doing with the business loan programs. That's three different grants that are still active right now. Two of them were from the CV period, what we call the CV COVID programs, as well as the regular CDBG program. You can see, those are the loans that we've put out. It's been a last probably two-year period, and the number of jobs that have been retained are generated through those loans. And the loans were to businesses throughout the county, so that we had loans in Upper Lake and the Lakeport area. We can't do county loans in the unincorporated areas of the cities of Clear Lake or Lakeport, but in that area, also the South County area, and then on the North Shore. So we, we were able to get loans throughout the county.
So those are three different grants?
Those are three different grants.
The oldest to newest?
Yes, CV one was first, and then two and three came later, and then the CDBG program, the regular.
Right.
Yeah.
Because when we talked about this a few years ago, there was low, no interest money pretty much everywhere, and also we were in the middle of COVID, and people didn't want to take on debt because it was so uncertain, and so it looks like you're having a lot more takers now that the economy's changed a little bit?
Yeah, the, the environment's changed a little bit. For examples, the idle program that was operated through the SBA, which we also worked on and did a lot of loans to that program, those loans actually ended up being like three and three-quarters rate, whereas the counties have always been one percent fixed. So one percent fixed rate is very, very appealing. And now even more so, we're working on several loans right now because there's still funding available through that two and three grant to assist them with job retention. So the appeal of the program is that one percent fixed rate. And then we extend the term of the repayment schedule, so it's easier on the business to make the repayments.
Great, I've got this in place for a lot of our small business owners that are really struggling right now.
Yeah, they're, the cycle is, it, it seems like we get through a disaster situation, and then another one comes along, and then there's a, a brief period where it stabilizes. And right now, again, because of the economy overall, we're having folks who are struggling once again with their cash flow, just not seeing the amount of discretionary income that customers have to buy things.
Supervisor Crandall has a question.
Yeah, if you can go back just one real quick. Yes, in regards to eighty percent of county median income, is it based off of gross net or adjusted gross income?
That's adjusted gross income.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
The micro enterprise program is something that we, we started about a year or so ago. We made application for it, the state took quite a while to get the county the, the standard agreement so that we could get in play on it. And so it's a great program, and we, we operate it in cooperation with the Lake County Economic Development Corporation and the Small Business Development Center, so that we have referrals going back and forth. In some cases, the EDC can pick up and take folks to the next level. In some cases, it's better for us to work with it through the county's program. So the, the things that we are doing with that, to give the board an idea of it, is business planning, financial forecasting, we spend a lot of time with that, just understanding cash flow, financial literacy, preparations to access for financing, which the workshop over in Lucerne is what, what they're talking about today, a marketing plan development, use of social media, QuickBooks. QuickBooks is a tool that we found quite a few businesses aren't familiar with, and once they get a handle on it and start using it, it's very helpful to them. And then credit building and credit repair, those are things that we're doing. We have other folks in our shop who are specialists in those arenas, and then all these services are free to folks who are eligible for the program.
And that's through the last grant cycle that?
Yes, yeah. These are the workshop locations that we've had, just to give you folks an idea, we try to make sure that we're reaching throughout the county, and then the dates when they occurred, and then the topics that we covered. Today, the workshop is going on right now, and it's how to get a business loan. So we have the banks involved, loan officers with the banks, and then the Economic Development Corporation, and the EDFC also participates in it to help folks understand how lenders look at their business when they are coming in and making application, and why they ask all those questions. It's, it's, we've had pretty good response with that so far. And then it's also good because then we can generate additional interaction and expand our relationships with other lenders in the area, so that we can then do companion loans for some of the folks that come in for the business loan. Like if the EDC has funding, and we have funding, and we can do a fifty percent of one, fifty the other, it works really well.
Great. How, oh, I was just going to ask, how well attended are they? I think your next slide shows.
Yeah, that's, yeah, shows that. So we've had, but we have about forty-five RSP, RSVPs. We, we've kind of expanded our marketing of these things, and the county's very active in that, the, the information is posted on their website and so on, and then we work with the chambers and the EDC and others, and then the business organizations around the lake. So that actually, that number of twenty-six workshop attendees is actually low, it's probably about thirty-two have come to the workshops. The first one in Lower Lake, we had, I think it was about sixteen people. Usually you get between seven to fifteen folks coming, and maybe fifty percent of those you end up working with in the long term. Some of them, it's just maybe an hour or two. So we have, right now, that says thirty total enrollments that we, that we're working long-term with folks. So that's the outcome. We use the workshops to, to make people aware of the services that are provided through the county, and then once you get. the county, and then once you get them enrolled and make sure they're eligible, then you can start a longer-term relationship one-on-one with them. Thank you, Ben.
Sure.
Ben wants to?
I can take over. So I already briefly touched on this, but, so there's up to 3.25 million per jurisdiction, but of that, only one activity can be over the counter. Had some initial discussions regarding public facilities. So with that, it has to tie to job creation or retention since this is community development, block grant, economic development. It's a little different than a lot of CDBG programs. Talked to community development also about possibly utilizing that. So those discussions are ongoing. Hope to have something figured out somewhat soon, and then look forward to the NOFO being issued in January. So the facade improvements would be, just to reiterate a bit, in the economic development over-the-counter activities, so also with CDS's work with lending and technical assistance. So I've worked on a few different facade improvement programs. I think they're great, relatively low investment to really kind of liven up a neighborhood. You can have that multiplier effect. The range we were thinking of was 5,000 to 40,000. And then it's kind of a wide range of use you can use. It's basically the outside appearance of the property, nothing with parking, but that's also kind of facing the right-of-way and is visible to the public. So geographic distribution, different facade improvement programs do this differently. Sometimes they concentrate where there's been a lot of kind of capital improvements with roads, or if there's a specific neighborhood plan or tied to other public expenditures. I thought with Lake County, because there's a decent amount of need in kind of the diffuse population, ideally, it would be split between supervisor district. But I think it's going to depend kind of on applicants because they're going to have to front some of the money, and there's a specific timeframe to apply, and this is the first time we've done this, so we'll see what rolls in. And then this is aimed to support small business, so just kind of the technical definition we're using for small businesses, the Small Business Administration for the specific industry code, how they define that. So it is a grant, but it's public dollars, so some accountability metrics in there. 25% upfront once a plan submitted and approved, and then 75% once the entire project is completed. We are requesting just a little bit of skin in the game. We understand there's some Lake County businesses that don't have a lot of cash flow, but 5% seems pretty reasonable. And then a six-month timeframe to complete the project, so public dollars aren't going to projects that are dragging out forever. I've been told it could take several months for HCD to approve this, just how they've been with previous CBG rounds in the past. But I'm going to be working with an online intake form, and once we get the HCD money, we'll move as quick as possible. That's it.
Great. I'm open up for questions from the board right now? Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to at least breach the conversation that I had with CAO Parker, and I know that Mr. Rickelman has also had with others, because I was trying to figure out where does District 2 fit into this from a county perspective. From what I understand, we're looking at this across all jurisdictions within the county of Lake and not simply in the unincorporated.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make that statement public, and I think that accounts for both our cities and tribal to work with us and figure out how best to utilize these dollars.
Yes, and I'm also reaching out to the cities regarding a potential public facilities project.
Awesome.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I appreciate this presentation, and obviously you want to continue any momentum that we've already established through these various things, but going back to, I think, what was your eighth slide and what the NOFA is going to do, my eyes immediately gravitated to public facilities and infrastructure and housing programs, not necessarily the things that you described later in the slide deck. So I just want to highlight that because as we get closer to the NOFA and closer to you guys bringing something back, you know, obviously I want to support what's been done, but 1.5 million for facade improvements may not be my first thing, and public facilities and infrastructure and housing are near and dear to my heart. So, and I know there's other buckets of money. We can address that stuff through continuum of care and other, other things, but if we haven't had opportunity to really dive down into CDBG and just really say, you know, what's the most bang for the buck? So small business assistance, QuickBooks, all that stuff, very important, but is a 1.5 million important, or are these other facilities' needs possibly something we should also be drilling down to in the NOFA process? So, and I know you're probably going to loop that stuff in as we go down that, but can you explain as we get closer to the NOFA and as you're going to bring back recommendations, how we not only continue what the recommendations might be for small business support, but also CDBG gives us more than that in what we can ask for? So just from my own education, how do I start ranking these competing interests when we get closer to scope in the NOFA?
Yeah, sure. And also, I want to give our CAO Parker a chance to comment too, but I don't know who wants to go first. Okay.
That's a very good comment. Right now, the state housing community development folks are, they've provided us with this information, which we tried to condense into something understandable from them. What they are trying to do is provide public facilities and infrastructure funds for projects that were not funded during a 2018, 2019 application cycle. They had a big batch of applicants come in. And so the way they structured this is a little hinky from our perspective. Those funds, well, are being targeted towards those older projects that are what they call shovel-ready. So for us to compete, what I'm thinking we'll probably want to do is a jurisdiction to get at, if we've got some public facilities and infrastructure projects that are getting close to shovel-ready, being we have, you know, the, is the environmental work done or near being done by the time we need to apply? We'll probably, let's see, January, they'll let the NOFA, January, February. By March or so, we're going to want to be ready with our application to submit. That would mean we'd have to have, for all these different activities, a clear idea of what the budget's going to be, you know, engineering, design work, if it's a structure or if it's infrastructure improvements. We want to make sure that all those things are done and that we have a project that could be implemented within a year or two to meet their cycle. So those are things that we, we kind of wanted to talk about and get you, get everybody thinking about a little bit. And that's also for, you know, the business development programs. We want to, if the board would decide to pursue the facade improvement, that would be one component in economic development along with the business assistance activities. So you just want to make sure that you're ready to go and that you can answer all their questions and provide them with the documentation they need. That's kind of why we wanted to present today to get you folks thinking about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think initially, just because of the, what the background that Jeff just, or Mr. Lucas just provided, but also we'll be reaching out to different department heads to see what they do have shovel-ready or new shovel, you know, shovel-ready as far as SEQA and permitting, because that will be a determining factor, especially on the competitive side, who will get the award. And we don't have, we don't have any outstanding old applications from 2019, so that already puts us kind of behind. So we were thinking initially to focus on the facade improvements and then explore other options with the different department heads, the ones that would be most competitive and eligible and most competitive and meet the income criteria, too.
How competitive are roads?
I can't speak to that, Mr. Lucas.
Can I speak to it?
Yes.
Yes.
So roads are not competitive at all, unfortunately. We've, we struggled and fought and with HCD on this, especially after, after the fires, because the roads were beat up so bad after they came in and collected all the leftovers, so to speak. So they won't do roads. And you know what we had to do for bridges, the language we had to use. So what they will do is if there's a project, say a housing project, and you're going to provide 60 units for veterans, seniors, and the targeted income group folks, and you need, and the highway's here, and you need a half a mile of roadway with utility hookups and sewer water, they will pay for that because that serves a specific project, and those people that are going to be residing there are within the national objective criteria. They, they fit the program. They won't, you know, just a road in a neighborhood, they won't do.
And that would include bus stops and any transportation or transit assistance?
Okay, Supervisor Spatier?
I don't know if it's HCD or HUD, but there is finally movement on roads when it comes to after fire, because I know that's why the city of Clear Lake was able to do the 20 miles or 15 miles. From what I understand, it's difficult to deal with them, but they finally started allowing some of those projects to happen. So I just think we need to keep looking out for that. It might not be through the CDBG program itself, that might be a separate program, but they have started to reopen that since the 2017 fires.
Through the Disaster Relief Fund?
Yeah, something along those lines. Where before we were asking FEMA and others to see if they can help us out, and they just said no, and finally something
That's good.
Got unclogged in the pipeline. At this moment in time, I'm going to put Mr. Rickelman on the hot seat a little bit. We hired Mr. Rickelman to provide economic development expertise. You're coming to us with this possibility of 1.5 million for facade improvements. I want to see what we do with it. I think that we've put you in this position to provide us opportunities to make positive change and enhance our tax revenue, and this has the potential to do so. And so I'm going to say, let's move forward, let's continue the conversation, but I'm happy to move forward with what's presented today because I think that it will help our businesses to be more attractive and to provide a different experience for those that are coming into Lake County. So I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just one point of clarification. So the 1.5, the facade's part of it?
Yeah.
It's also the business loans and the technical advice. We didn't put specific figures kind of subcategory because if we did that, went to HCD and said like we were going to do 500,000 in facade, and let's say, turns out, we actually, there's a strong demand for lending, or a much stronger demand for facade, we can't really go back to HCD, so that's just preserves the flexibility.
Yeah, and we want to continue the programs we already had because those run out of money as well, so, but no, in support of what's presented.
Supervisor Crandall?
So you're saying that public facilities and infrastructure, it would have had to be something that was applied for shovel-ready in 2019?
That's what they're providing. Yes, that's what we're saying.
And do we know which ones were applied for then, or?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry.
Do we know which facilities or infrastructure were applied for on our behalf?
There were none.
There were none?
No.
So basically, we can't really even do that one?
We would not be competitive
Okay.
This time around, this, and this NOFA.
Okay.
Yeah. See, that's why, you know, we're, we provide this information, but we wanted to take this time today to put it in context for you.
Okay. I'm just making sure because this is applied for two different activities, and that's just to have a backup?
Well, we wanted to start the conversation for public facilities, infrastructure, because the county hasn't used this particular source of funds in years for that purpose, and there may be good reasons for that, but want to take another look at it because it is a good source of funds and there is a need for it. Having said that, there are two activities that we could pursue. One would, one would be, and be competitive for and have a high likelihood of success would be the economic development components that we just talked about. And then for planning, you can apply, the county could apply for up to $250,000 for planning, strategy development, and that's, that could also take care of some of the NEPA and SEQA requirements if there were any related to a specific project. For example, if you wanted to do a public facility project and you needed to do, put together a plan for that particular project on how to develop and what the cost would be, you could use these funds for that. For example, City Point Arena is doing that for an improvement to current City Hall and the Veterans Hall, and it's also the Sheriff's Station and a bunch of other public benefit The county hasn't done, to the best of my knowledge, an in-depth strategy development for housing. Where, where are housing units going to go? What kind of housing? What does the county want overall in the unincorporated area, and how does it fit with the cities for that? So that, this, that might be something that you would be eligible for and you would be competitive for, but it's up, up to you folks to decide what you want to do. These are just things that we, we consider we'd be eligible for.
I should have shared this with Jeff before I just found out from Community Development, so I approached them for the housing analysis, and they have another over-the-counter source from HCD, so another HCD bucket. But I'm sure there's plenty of other planning needs, so going to explore that further.
I'd just like, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yes, with Lisa's, you know, the retention of Lisa, I mean, we were at the Rural Housing Summit last week, and we, we've already started working on a scope of work to do a comprehensive county-wide housing strategy and implementation plan, hopefully for the next 10 to 15 to 20 years, noting funding sources, timelines, synergy of projects, an assessment of what's available, what's not available, and looking at all, nothing's off the table. New construction, rehab, rehabbing of hotels, motels, nothing is off the counter, and that's what we will probably get out of here in the next 20 days and put it out for bed.
Great.
Because I was just, this is just throwing it out there, and different public facilities that we have that are, that are very, you know, in bad condition, things like that. So I was thinking of that, not just, you know, our actual facilities, but also harbors, piers around the lake, things like that, just thinking of other things, you know. But I understand the economic development for me is very important. So I'm, but I'm only throwing that out there because you're looking at things to possibly have prepared, so I'm just giving an idea of something I could think of.
Yeah, it's a good point. There can be some infrastructure tie-in, even if it's like a private harbor or some other piece of infrastructure that, I think what they're mostly concerned with is the low and medium income, and then how does it tie to job creation? So if you can make those arguments, there's a decent chance.
Because I know with harbors and piers, at some, you know, point, there's an opportunity for commerce to, you know, work for boating and things like that, so.
Supervisor Spatier?
And I think that strategic planning on what is the plan for the next 10, 15 years for economic development will lead us to have the, just like we have now a 10-year plan for our roads, now we're working on engineering all of those projects so that they are right there on the shelf for us to pull off when funding becomes available. To me, that's the same vision that I have for economic development, that we know what the next step is, therefore, we've already worked it out, and we're finding the funding to make sure we design those things, not just put a perspective idea on paper where it doesn't provide us the ability to capture some of these funds. And so I see that as a future capability, and I And so, I see that as a future capability, and at this moment, we just need to build with what we have and what we can. But I feel momentum as far as where we'll be and what will be more available to us.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers who wishes to speak on this item or in the Zoom room? Not seeing any. Hands up. Oh, we do have one hand up. Betsy, want to unmute? Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to know if any of this money, any of these projects would be in, for preparation of emergency management facilities, temporary refuge areas. They're called, you know, locations for setting up pre-disaster storage of supplies in different communities under the National Disaster Recovery Framework and things like that. Actual, you know, supplies in those communities to help them survive and recover from fires.
I don't think HCD would find that permissible. So this is the specific economic development bucket of the CDBG program. So it's tied to kind of directly economic activity, job creation, job retention. There has been some hybrid projects, where you've co-located kind of entrepreneurial space and emergency shelters. But how I read the regulations for this, for the economic development activities, it wouldn't connect.
Yeah, and we have also applied for other funding for community resilient centers for planning, and we're waiting to hear on that grant that we submitted, I think, in September. Okay, do we have any other public comment? Not seeing anyone? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. And this was just presentation, correct? Yep. Thank you for joining us today. It's always wonderful to hear from both of you and
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more when the NOFA is released. Great, thanks. We can go through our 6.9 item. Does anyone need a short break before we do that? All right, 6.9. Our 11:30 a.m. public hearing, consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of a modification, MMU 2201, to a tentative subdivision map, SD 01, I'm sorry, 06-01 for Valley Oaks Land and Development, Inc., location 18426 South, Highway 29, and 18765 Hartman Road, Middletown, APNs 01426051 and 01426024. We have our Community Development Department, our director here, Maria Turner.
Thank you, Maria Turner, Community Development Director. I have with me today Associate Planner Eric Porter, who will present the staff report. We also have representatives for the property owners available for questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. This request is limited to adding a lot into the approved Valley Oaks subdivision for purposes of access. Just to back up a bit, originally, the plan was to connect to the Roundabout with Hartman. Caltrans and the applicant were not able to come on the same page regarding the Roundabout connection, and so they had to come up with an alternative to provide access to grocery outlet. Consequently, they constructed Oak Meadow Road, which connects to Hartman, as an alternative entrance into Valley Oaks commercial subdivision. The issue was APN 01426024, which contains the connector road, was not formally introduced into the border of the subdivision. So your action today would essentially legitimize that alternative access. One of the supervisors had a question about Arabian Lane, and I did talk to the developers about what their intention was, and they indicated that with Caltrans and with the county, assuming they're on board at a later date, Arabian Lane could turn into a right-out exit-only without an entrance. There was some discussion about whether Arabian Lane is actually too close to the Roundabout. And the other question that is still unanswered is when the Roundabout itself will connect with the internal driveway, because that would provide essentially the main access into Valley Oaks commercial development. One thing I did want to point out, the applicant is requesting, this is on Exhibit 4B. Sorry, my glasses keep fogging up. The applicant's requesting the establishment only of Condition 3, which would negate the need for Conditions 4 and 5. Again, this is Exhibit 4B. The other part of this is that the dates need to be filled in, so we'll take care of that following the hearing. And on General Condition Number 2, the applicant asked to add for clarification a short phrase. So the applicant's requesting that it be changed to say, "Approval of this modification allows the inclusion of an access road easement on APN 01426024." So the additional words would be, "an access road easement on," and staff has no issue with that. The two conditions that they wanted to remove are General Condition Number 4 and Number 5. Number 4 says, "Development contemplated on any portion of APN 01426024 shall require a full amendment, addendum to the FEIR for Valley Oaks and all SEQA categories shall be evaluated for mitigation to any potential impacts that might occur or might result." Number 5 says, "Any development contemplated, development on any portion of APN 01426024 shall require a specific plan of development, parentheses, major use permit, end parentheses, and design review, in addition to potential amendment of the addendum to the FIR stated in Number 4 above." Because this only applies to the modification, we're not too concerned about retaining Conditions Number 4 and 5. So to have those stricken, the planning staff is acceptable. And that concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions.
Madam Chair, if I may, sorry. Since this is a public hearing, testimony, any sort of testimony, subject under oath.
Okay. Anyone?
Should I still do it? In case the applicant...
Okay. If you're going to talk, can you swear in for me?
We should all swear.
Yeah, we should all swear in. Okay. With your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Thanks.
If there is one other thing, please, that, just to point out, we had a typographical error in the executive summary, where it refers to subsection 60.21 of the county code regarding the modification of permits. The correct citation is actually 60.33, not 60.21. Gets the same thing done, just a different number.
Thank you. Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a clarification question. If I read correctly, SEQA was done on the alternative entry point solely for the idea of grocery outlet, but SEQA has not been done on this idea of this temporary road being used for the, I don't have the exact number of units, but 300-plus potential units. SEQA has not been reviewed for traffic flow and things like that for the overall project, or was it simply for grocery outlet?
Well, there are two different actions that happened for Valley Oaks regarding SEQA. The primary was the environmental impact report, and that was actually part of the adopted subdivision, or the approved tentative vesting subdivision that the board approved in 2018. That was accompanied by the environmental impact report, which was extensively vetted by a former director, Bob Masserelli, who had some concerns about some of the findings, but ultimately, it got adopted by the county. So the FEIR, or the addendum that accompanied Valley Oaks, was intended pretty much exclusively for Valley Oaks, but that did take into consideration the alternative Oak Meadow access. As far as future development goes, I believe we will have to reevaluate SEQA at a later date, if there are development plans for either the totality of the residential portion of it, or frankly, any aspect of the commercial part. However, we haven't evaluated it with this modification for future SEQA impacts. So I'm going to have the applicant and his consultant further address that aspect of it.
And if I may, before that, just to at least express my concern, is I'm seeing people going, in my mind, I'm envisioning people going down Hartman, all of a sudden, they're stopped with their blinkers to turn left, and they can't go because there's traffic flowing out Hartman towards Highway 29. What does that traffic flow look like? How long before it hits that Roundabout? All those things, I'm not quite sure how the flow of traffic ends up working out with just a single, singular T-intersection right there, if it gets fully developed in the long run. In the short run, as it works now, works great. But when I see 300-plus homes built out and maybe there's no further connection to the Roundabout, maybe Arabian Lane is not a possibility, I have concerns for that one as well, depending on how that will be built out. But just, we're trying to take away access to Highway 29 and add more conducive traffic flows and decrease traffic congestions. The last thing I want to do is say yes to something that might recreate new traffic congestions elsewhere. Just at least wanted to express it.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. These are just going to be process questions, but I'm looking at the minutes from June 8th, and I see that the Planning Commission approved the amended vesting tentative subdivision map, but it wasn't titled as today's item is titled, having to do with a modification. So in this item, I have MMU 22-01. I don't see that the Planning Commission heard a full MMU application, and although they did approve the, they recommended approval of the amended tentative subdivision map, I don't know that they went over proposed modifications to the conditions of approval, and I don't see any findings that the addendum to the final EIR be accepted. So can you, just so I know what the deliverables are, it seems to me that the MMU 22-01 application is sort of a bundle, but I want to make sure when we're voting to approve that bundle that it includes probably what's going to be Exhibit 3, the amended vested tentative map, the modified COAs, including the amendments proposed today, and the SEQA findings on the FEIR addendum. So I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission process lines up with what's before us today.
Thank you. Yes, the vesting tentative map was approved by the Planning Commission. They were able to do the approval, not just a recommendation for the board. So that's why that item didn't move forward for board action today. So what you have before you today is the modification. The vesting tentative map was included as an attachment, just to help the board see where that road is going to be, where Oak Meadow Drive is. But the board need not take any action on the vesting tentative map.
Follow-up?
And Rick can jump up here and correct me if I'm mistaken.
Finish your comments, Supervisor Green?
Well, I'm just looking. So then, in the second recommended action, it suggested we approve the modification to the tentative vesting subdivision. So we're not approving the map? So again, I don't know what an MMU is, and I haven't seen an application, so I don't know what the deliverables are. So if we're not being asked to reapprove a tentative subdivision map that's already been approved by PC in its amended form, you know, what's the document we're being asked to approve?
Sure. Why don't you come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
There's a lot of questions, I think I might be
You say your name for the record.
Add some color. I'm Rick Tuckert. I'm a planning consultant for the applicant who is here on Zoom, and our team is here in the room as well. I work for Alabro and Martell in Napa. Let me back up to then answer some of the questions that you've raised in a few minutes. In fact, I would like to do, if I could, hand to the clerk as well. Those are the conditions that your staff has talked about in terms of just the cover page with the change, so I'll address that issue as well. There, this application contains really just two issues. The first issue is, in 2018, when the board approved the subdivision map, the large tentative subdivision map, it included a condition, and that condition said that we were to come before you at some point in the future with a commercial phasing plan. The project on the upper parcel had a residential phasing plan, but the lower portion, the 29 portion, if you will, did not have the phasing plan, so we were asked to come back at some future point to do that. The second thing that, and of course, we're proposing that today, we have that plan that's embedded in the plans that you have and in the reporting. The second thing that was asked, it really came out of the 2020 decision that you saw as an appeal, actually, on the grocery outlet store. And in, at that time, Mr. Porter's correct, at the time, there was an issue with the Roundabout, the alternative access would be the Hartman connection to Oak Meadow, which is actually under construction and nearly ready to finalize. So those are the only two items that are before you for consideration. What the phasing does, going back to that portion of it, the commercial phasing plan that we presented to you, is it essentially starts with the grocery outlet store. It's built, it just happens to be on the entirety of the lower portion that fronts on its entirety to 29. What the proposal in the first phase would do is essentially put a parcel around grocery outlet so that can be transacted. And with that transaction, funds can then, capital can then be used to start flowing into other subsequent phases, commercial and residential. And so there's a multi-phase commercial plan that really starts at the south and then runs the entirety of the length through to the north, that build-out, including the housing site. The proposal to add the Hartman connection is strictly a road easement. It's not for the entirety of Parcel 24, that's why SEQA wouldn't be required. If the entirety of 24 were to be included, instead of just the easement connection, the road connection, as a former Community Development Director and Planning Director in a lot of different agencies, what the staff would have had to do is look at the potential for development of 24. But that's not proposed, there is no proposal to develop 24, who knows if it'll be developed and by who in the future, and what the development will be. But the analysis that occurred in 2020 for the road connection, the extension from Hartman to the grocery outlet, that was evaluated, the developer submitted at the time a W Trans report that was fully vetted for what the change in the traffic flow would be without the Roundabout, but instead at Hartman, and then how that would translate in the future with development with or without the Roundabout. So that environmental was fully vetted in 2020. So, back to the two parts, a commercial phasing plan and the connection of just the road easement. On the roads, the 20, the road connections that really are three points now, right? The Hartman connection to the grocery outlet and through the project, the Roundabout and Arabian. As you know, there's a, there was a challenge between developer and Caltrans as to that fourth leg, I think it was the fourth leg of the Roundabout, after the 2018 approval. That's working through a process, and we believe that we're at a point where there's going to be an agreement soon that would essentially open that up. It's my understanding, and I'm not a party to that, so I don't want to speak out of It's my understanding, and I'm not a party to that, so I don't want to speak out of turn, but essentially, it's always been my understanding that the roundabout has never really been the issue. It's always known to have that fourth connection. It's on the map, it was never commented by Caltrans at the time as being an issue, it only came up later. Real issue is Arabian. Arabian potentially is too close to the roundabout. Caltrans often, in many projects that I've worked over, dozens in my career, Caltrans doesn't like connections to state highways that are often close to roundabouts, or for that matter, two connections that are close together. I'm virtually certain that's going to be resolved in the short term, so that, as you saw in the phasing plan that we presented to you, Phase 1, the grocery outlet lot, Phase 2, two lots next to grocery outlet, Phase 3, just adjacent to those three lots, grocery outlet, those don't need the roundabout. Once you start getting into Phase 4, Phase 5, then you'll need the roundabout, and we're virtually certain that that will be addressed by then. And to add to that point, this Board of Supervisors has the ability to, every time a final map is presented, to review that final map, to say, now's not the time because we have an issue. So I don't suspect that you'll have a problem with putting a parcel line around grocery outlet, or Phase 2, putting two lots next to grocery outlet, or even Phase 3, that's not anywhere needing to access the roundabout. I suspect that it'll come at a point later where you'll say, okay, now that needs to be resolved. That could be quite some time away, will be well settled before that. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that you had.
Just very quickly, when you say process, you mean litigation, right? There's litigation ongoing with Caltrans on this?
That's correct, and the process goes through a series of exercises to resolve litigation, and that's what I mean by I believe we're close to getting to a point where it's no longer an issue.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor Sabatier?
Appreciate the response. I couldn't find some of that information within the information provided to us, just because there's been so many iterations of this project to get to where we are today. Love the project. I think it's absolutely necessary. It's one of those long-term projects that we all want to see accomplished. But is there, just because, you never know with Caltrans, I'd love to believe that everything will get worked out when it comes especially to the roundabout, because that is the most legitimate way to access this project, and I sure hope that's the way it goes. You were stating that, and I don't know if you meant specifically, but you were saying after Phase 6, yeah, at that point, there might be an issue if there's no access to the roundabout. Is there a trigger to go back and review those things once they do reach a certain phase? I just want to make sure that that exists, just because I do have that concern, especially if it's still accessed through Hartman, that we would need to make sure that there's that, the traffic flow is taken care of if Caltrans doesn't want to play ball.
And Supervisor, let me perhaps respond, and staff may respond, piggyback off of that. So yes, there are triggers, and it's after Phase 3 really, not Phases 5, 4, 5, and 6. The trigger is that if, and there's detail in each phase as to what infrastructure supports the construction phase, and each one has an option. It says, if the roundabout isn't available, then it would be this. If the roundabout is available, then it connects up to it. Once you get to those later phases, we'd have to provide proof to the county that the traffic flow works for the project to actually receive a final map. We know it works with grocery outlet, we know it works with 2, and we know it works with 3. By the time you get to 4, the county staff would have to say, hey, you need to show us that this works from a traffic flow perspective. I neglected also to mention this, the trigger for Phase 2, or traffic that generates from a future phase, presumably the next phase is 2, would require a left-hand turn stop sign, or stop light, if I recall. Actually, it's a stop light.
Stack lane.
A stack lane?
Left turn lane.
Left turn lane, so that you, basically, there's more control over those folks coming out of, you know, Hidden Valley. So it's those kind of stopgap measures that are in place to protect the county, but also to ensure that you're telling us what's responsible and required at each and every phase of a final map.
I appreciate the answer. That was my only concern, and that is alleviated with the response that I received.
We don't have anyone else sworn in, so we're not going to open up for public comment? Or do we? Yes, public comment? Okay. Anyone in the chambers for public comment? And I'm not seeing anyone in the Zoom room, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Get Mike with a question here.
Oh. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I apologize. I just go back to the titling of this item. So if we are actually, as listed on the memo, considering the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of MMU 22-01, and then I go back to the minutes, and all I saw was the approval of the amended vested subdivision map. But what is before us here today is more than a map. Is this titled correctly?
Go ahead, County Council.
I think I can provide, good morning, or afternoon. I think I could provide a little bit of clarity as to which rule applies here, and because I think you're kind of crossing between modifications under the ordinance and the use of the MMU modification title within CDD. So what's applied here is Article 60, Part 60.33, point 33, which is an application for an amendment. So when an applicant wants to change an already-approved permit, what they do is they reapply for another permit with those changes in the permit. There is nothing within that code section that requires a Planning Commission review. So even if the Planning Commission is recommending, making a recommendation, the rule 60.33 here requires merely that the applicant reapply and go through the exact same process as the prior permit in front of the same board or decision-maker that made the original permit decision. And in this case, that was your board. So that's why it has come to you instead of stopping at the Planning Commission. So as outlined by staff, what you're being asked to consider here are the amendments that the applicant is requesting be made to the permit that your board approved prior to this, if that helps.
Thank you. Okay.
So, question then. And I don't think you can do it on the fly, but you could say possibly it's de minimis. If it was titled, for example, "Consideration of Modification MMU 22-01," and the rest of the title continued that, just striking the words of the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, that title would be accurate, and then the recommended findings contained within the staff report, everything else would be perfect.
I think actually the Planning Commission did approve, or did make that recommendation of approval, but maybe not at the same date as the vested tentative, vesting tentative map. So I have an email into staff right now, just checking that date. So we will clarify it.
Okay.
I'm ready to move forward. To me, it's semantics. I'm comfortable.
Ready for action?
Madam Chair?
Do you have one more thing, Lloyd?
I'm sorry?
Did you have something else?
Yeah, regarding the motions themselves.
Okay.
Because of the, what was discussed here, there's, apparently, there's two separate motions, and your board may, for the first motion regarding the adoption of the FEIR addendum, move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the addendum to the final Environmental Impact Report based on findings in the memorandum for MMU 22-01 dated November 7, 2023, and I would recommend adding the phrase "including the findings" on Page 7 of the staff report dated June 8, 2023, for further clarity, if staff is okay with that.
So moved.
Second. Aren't there also amendments to changing the condition of approvals?
Removing 4 and 5, is that the next one?
That would be the, on the next.
Second.
Are we at a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And then for the second motion regarding the approval of the modification in parentheses, MMU 22-01, motion, move that the Board of Supervisors approve the modification, parentheses, MMU 22-01 as amended, to tentative vesting subdivision for Valley Oaks, parentheses, SD 06-01, based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the staff memorandum dated November 7, 2023, and I would recommend adding "including the findings" on Pages 7 and 8 of the staff report dated June 8, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Madam Chair, just, I wasn't certain from the way that was read whether that included "as amended" the conditions that the county staff supported.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I didn't hear.
Okay, thank you so much.
He doesn't want to come back.
Okay, let's do one final item before we take our lunch break. 7.7, "Consideration of Proposed Findings of Facts and Decision in the Appeal of Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, AB 23-01," County Council.
Yes, so it's fairly straightforward.
Just real quick, since it's a decision, I've recused myself throughout this one.
Of course, thank you.
She just wants an early lunch.
Yeah.
Yes, so on September 19, 2023, your board determined by a vote of 4 to 0 with one recusal to grant this appeal in part, and the phrase "in part" is based on the modification of the condition, which is condition number Roman numeral 3.4 to parcel map PM 22-02, which the appellant appealed, to be amended pursuant to your board's intended decision to state, "Prior to the recording of the final map, developer shall submit payment to the Department of Public Works for the half-width of Red Hills Road, county-maintained road, improvements to conform to the Lake Road Design and Construction Standard 200-A, minor arterial road, or complete the required improvements." And that language came out of the discussion at that September 19, 2023 hearing pursuant to staff's recommendation. So what you have before you today is the findings of fact and decision, and we are recommending, staff is recommending two actions, move to approve the findings of fact and decision, and authorize the chair to sign, and move to grant the appeal in part with the amended condition stated.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Green?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any comments?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Tom Jordan, Staff to Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. I'm not here to challenge the findings of fact and decision. Conceptually, I do agree with them. However, I think there's some wording in the language that is a bit ambiguous, and I'm hoping to avoid any future interpretations of the language, and I'm recommending some changes to the language. I'm happy to present those here at this point in time. Specifically, if you look at Page 1 of the findings of fact and decision, number 2, Legal Council did indicate, on the third line, the penultimate word, the half-width of Red Hills World, that language is a bit ambiguous. Red Hills Road is, what, over 2 miles long? The indication would be that perhaps we would be responsible for that whole half-width of that entire road, and I'm sure that wasn't the intent of your supervisor's decision. I would recommend that the language say something to the effect of the half-width section of Red Hills World adjacent to the new rural residential zone be added, to make sure it's clarifying that the section that we are talking about only applies to the parcel map change. Further down on Page 1, I realize that perhaps the wording of the condition number 4 that I probably proposed myself was also a bit ambiguous, and would recommend that after the word parcel in the last line, we add the words "map" of the existing rural residential zone, or actually not existing, but of the new rural residential zone. That same language appears in 8B, that is to say, the half-width of Red Hills World, and it appears in Section 10, or Article 10, in the last line on that page. Again, it says the half-width world of, half-width of Red Hills Road, and I believe we were only talking about that section relative to the parcel map. In addition, the findings indicate, number 7, numerous members of the public testified and/or submitted written statements against the approval of this project. I'm not sure what that refers to. I think it refers to the Planning Commission hearing of May 25th. I attended that hearing vis a vis the Zoom. I do not recall any public testimony either for or against that action, and I'm requesting that that, number 7, be stricken from the facts and finding. And then finally, under number 10, the second line reads, "Grants the appeal of the appellant's Scotts Valley Corporation." There is no Scotts Valley Corporation, it's Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, so I'm recommending the word "energy" be added, and I'm recommending the word "appellants" be stricken and revised to "appellant," since there was only one appellant, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation. So those are the recommendations I'm asking for to, again, to avoid any future confusion or interpretation of the facts and findings that your commission is, or your council is here to approve today.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So all the ones of changing, like the original argument, it states specifically "conditions to parcel" and speaks to the parcel map, 22-02, and so to me, the half-width is directly allocated, not allocated, but connected to the parcel map, 22-02, not the entire length of the road. So I personally don't think that there's a change unless County Council tells me otherwise that we need to do that. I don't see necessarily a reason to even have number 7, that written statements were for or against the project, again, unless County Council says otherwise, and the other changes to Scotts Valley Energy Corporation and appellants to appellant, I'm definitely okay with changing.
Yeah.
Okay. County Council?
Yeah, so the, not a problem with Section 7. The correction on number 10 regarding the appellants, on changing that to singular and adding the energy between Valley and Corporation to state Scotts Valley Energy Corporation is fine, which leaves us with the reference to half-width, which is located in, I believe, Section 2, Section 8B, and Section 10. That's lifted from the recommendation language that staff has brought forth, namely Director Turner from CDD, in which your board approved, and word for word, that was the language that was put forth as the amendment to be made to that condition. So it would be up to your board, Supervisor Sabatier stated, to either retain the language. If there is any alternative language to be proposed here, I would recommend either having Director Turner be available, if that is the direction that your board is willing to take. And I think that would cover all of the proposed changes by the appellant.
Through the chair. My concern is that the property is actually two parcels, or two sections of one parcel, the commercial section and the rural residential section. And as Supervisor Sabatier indicated, that parcel map would probably most likely include the commercial section, and that's not what we are intended to have. And I don't think always your council's intent that I would be, or we would be responsible for widening the road for the total parcel, including the commercial section parcel of plus or minus 14 acres, and the rural residential zoned area. So that's the reason I'm requesting that section. I also found in Section Number 1, on Page 1, a typo after the words 34 acre, I don't think you meant lots into four parcels, I think you meant lots, L-O-T-S.
So we do have Director Turner?
Damn spell check when the right, the word is right.
You're muted.
She's still muted.
Would you please repeat that question for me? I just got in.
I just got in.
Basically, on the findings, it says tentative parcel map PM 22-02, I'm looking at the wrong one, actually, for this project, subject to the following amendment. Keep saying parcel map. He's requesting that there be more specifics as to the half width extent, expansion of the road, and questioning to see if there can be a more precise way to spell it out in this document.
To exclude the portion of the parcel that is zoned commercial? I don't think that was in, I don't think that that was conveyed in the conditions. I would actually also, let me see if I can get ahold of Scott DeLeon, because that condition was.
Yeah, maybe we should continue this. Sounds like.
I'm happy to have it continued.
Yeah, why don't we have this continued? And would you mind submitting your proposed changes so that they can take a look at it and take a look at the language and explaining your concerns? We can bring it back? That way we can have both Public Works and Community Development look at it.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Yes?
And the continuance would be for a?
When would be a good time?
Do you want a time certain?
Yes, a time agenda item would be nice.
That'd be good for him since he's, okay.
Do you have a question for County Council? I know that we're supposed to approve these within a certain timeframe, I think 45 days. Does a continuation extend that, or are we still bound to the 45-day schedule?
It would. It would extend it. The argument there arguably though, following the 45-day period, there's a 15-day period by which the notice is to be sent to the appellant. So the concept or argument there would be, if it, essentially it tolls the period to give room for that 15-day period that follows the 45-day period by which the appellant would then receive, or the notice of the findings of fact and decision would be sent to the appellant.
I wish we could settle this before the day is over. We have a lunch, and then we have a couple more items.
There might be some other house. Before this comes back, I want to point out at the top of page two that the de novo hearing we conducted was on September 19 of this year, but it should probably be called out and specified.
Johanna, do you have a time?
9:30?
When?
9:30?
On which day?
Next week?
Next week, there's only going to be three of us, and one of them can't vote.
That makes it a problem.
The 28th?
Hold on.
11. On the 28th?
Yeah.
I could do 11 on the 28th. I could turn it to the, I could go up to talk to Ms. Turner and see if I could get her clarification, and maybe she could come back with a recommendation.
Or later today?
Later today.
We have, we could do that, but are you going to be around, though? I know you have to leave.
I have a 2 o'clock.
I don't know that we'll get it done before 2 o'clock.
I would trust Maria Turner if I could, if we can get agreement on the language.
Okay.
I actually did just speak with Public Works Director Scott DeLeon. He said that it applies to the whole length of the county road, so it would not exclude the portion that is to remain zoned highway commercial.
You're asking the appellant, Scotts Valley Energy Corporation, to pay for the entire width of the Red Hills Road from Highway 29 to Highway 175, which is what he was in discussion with the council at the time?
It would be all along the county road.
That county road maintain is from Highway 29 to 175.
For the parcels, for the parcels within the project.
For the length of the parcel, yes. So it would not exclude, it would be for the length of the parcel regardless of the zoning district, of each portion of the parcel.
That certainly wasn't my understanding of your council's decision. And so you can see why they, in my opinion, there's confusion. I thought it was only pertaining to the residential, rural residential section or portion of the parcel. You're adding another 900 feet of.
That is not my understanding, but if it's up to, if the board supports, I would be happy to take time and review the past board meeting to see if the actions of the board did not reflect the condition as it is stated.
Yeah.
And I could represent to the board, I took the phrase, the recommendations made by CDD Director Turner, word for word, as far as how this condition should be amended for the board's consideration back in September 19. But we could certainly double check, and that's what the board decided on as far as granting the appeal in part with this amended language.
So it'd be just for the parcel, the length of the parcel map?
And I think where Mr. Jordan is stuck on is, in his mind, the parcel's already split, because one side is going to do the commercial energy stuff, and one side will be the housing. We have a one singular parcel at this moment in time. And so I.
However, if I may, sorry, the parcel that is intended for the energy is not within the highway commercial zoning district. If I remember correctly, it's also in rural residential, just on a separate parcel.
It's one of the four subdivisions, four subdivisions, four parcels within the subdivision, tentative map approved by the planning commission. So there is a minor correction there. The commercial section is entirely adjacent to Highway 29, and the rural residential section is south by approximately 900 to 1200 feet south of Highway 29. So the question is, does the parcel map for the subdivision include the entire parcel, or does it only include the parcel, portion of the parcel of the property that is the rural residential? That's the essence of the issue.
The parcel map would include the new four parcels as well as the remainder. So it is, it has, it shows the existing parcel.
But since there's no, since there's no residential homes being put on the commercial, by definition not allowed to be on the commercial highway zone, why would it be included in the requirement of a subdivision map to widen that section of the parcel?
Interesting.
Yes, very interesting.
So, if I may.
I don't know that it matters since it's the length of the parcel that is included in the parcel map. So, but I can, should the board direct, I'd be happy to take extra time to confer with the Public Works Director.
Why don't we continue this?
Sounds like we're setting this for the 28th.
Yeah, let's continue this to the 28th.
Sorry, I was hoping we could resolve it today.
That's all right. We need to get it right.
28th at 9:30?
11.
Oh, 11, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Probably the continuance will have to be done by motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to continue this item to November 28.
8th at 11:00.
At 11:00 AM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we will take a lunch break and come back at 1:50.
Thank you all for your patience and understanding.
Thank you, Tom. All right, welcome back. We'll start with 7.1, we'll go to calendars. Anyone ready for that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So tomorrow I have RCRC, Golden State Finance, and Golden State Connect Executive Committee meeting in Sacramento to Thursday. I'll be meeting with the Gleaners at 10:00, and then the Clean Water Program in the afternoon. Friday's Veterans Day. With that, Saturday, I'll be going to the Veterans Event that they hold at the Big Valley Conference Room, starts at 11:00. Back here Monday for the CAO meeting, and then the Central Region Town Hall meeting at 6:00 PM at the Lucerne Alpine Senior Center, and back here Tuesday for Board Supervisor.
Hey, Supervisor Sabatier?
I have an LTA meeting tomorrow to start off the day, meeting with PEG to get some things organized for Thursday, also for our agenda meeting coming up on that Monday. On Thursday, I'm meeting with the grand jury, having a meeting with our CHIP action team from Hope Rising, going to join the Clean Water Program as well with Supervisor Crandall, and later on that evening at Woodland Community College at 5:00 PM. There's a pretty big meeting as far as being important to show up and show your support for the needs of Woodland Community College over in Clear Lake. The Board of Trustees will be having their meeting over at that campus. I do plan to have PEG there so that it can be streamed live. I believe it'll be on the City of Clear Lake's YouTube channel, but please come out, show your support. We need to make sure we continue to not just have higher education in the area, but great opportunities within higher education in our area. This moment in time pretty lacks the rest of that week, and then starting Monday, I am taking off for the CSAC Annual Conference and coming back that, is that Friday or Thursday? Anyways, coming back later that week.
Friday morning?
And then meeting with our CAO, and not doing that actually, getting ready for the holidays after that, and getting ready for our meeting on the 28th. I will most likely pop in on one specific item on our meeting on the 14th, and because AB 2499 allows me, when conducting business away from the area, to join in, I'll be able to join in and vote and provide my feedback on that.
Anyone ready down here?
You?
Is there no sound?
I got sound.
Is there sound on Granicus or just?
So go or don't go? Wait.
Is that a pause? Granicus is fine.
Just heard Bruno.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, LTA tomorrow morning too with Bruno, I think it's at the Lower Lake, building in Lower Lake. And then Thursday, I have, I think I'll be actually going out of town, we've got playoffs this weekend, so.
Congrats.
Heading up to Fortuna. I want to congratulate all the Lake County teams that are in the playoffs, but I think we got three or, three for sure. I know Clear Lake, Kelseyville, and Middletown are in there, different divisions, but, you know, great season for everybody, all the teams in Lake County. And then obviously Veterans Day, but we had a special RRA meeting yesterday. We were able to convene it and pull it together to look at long-term opportunities, to bring, you know, some opportunities for the RA, always looking at funding, and I'll let Chair Paeska elaborate on that, so I don't just take it all, but I think it was a good meeting, positive reception, we got enough, we got a quorum, so we got it done. So very important, as we're looking at all these grant opportunities, and I thought it was a very positive meeting all the way across the board with all the directors. So it was a really good meeting. I am going to still reach out to the CSAC folks, I know they asked for some tribal participation, and we'll just confirm, see if I can get in on that Monday meeting in Oakland just to have a conversation. Also, just to let you know, it was announced that the California Nations Indian Gaming Association meeting, that that meeting was happening, so hopefully there will be some good participation at that thing on Monday in Oakland. And then back here, obviously, for the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday. I did not make the class and comp meeting yesterday afternoon, so I got the information, so, but I did not make the meeting yesterday. That's it.
Scotts Valley will have a representative, and I remembered who it was. The Manchester Point Arena Chairwoman said she would, she wanted, she would set up to go to, so at least there's two, and Moke, if you go.
Yeah, I'm planning on going.
Last week, I went to Eureka for North Coast EMS, really nice meeting, nice quick meeting. And among other things, we did kind of retroactively approve in concepts, some preliminary input that North Coast EMS has provided to a, what will turn into a draft ambulance ordinance at some point. So that was good, and there was good engagement, and people seemed to be happy with the process as it was emerging. Friday, thanks to everyone who attended, kind of a very ad hoc meeting on our emergency shelter and some code issues we needed to discuss on that. Still some stuff to talk about, but I found that meeting to be pretty hopeful and productive. I did go to class and comp on Monday. We did review a proposal from Social Services. I expect we'll probably be hearing something about that at this board in the near future. Tomorrow, it looks like I have an ad hoc for first five lake. We need to recruit some new commissioners for that body. That's important. Thursday, Behavioral Health Advisory Board at 4:00, that'll be here in Lakeport at Circle of Native Minds. Next week, I won't be traveling to CSAC, so I will not be attending the new supervisors' reunion, but I hope those who are attending will reach out and give a warm welcome to those who are new to the fold. I found all of my new supervisors' training very helpful, and we have a good rookie class in there. And I think that's, I think that's all I got for right now. Ag advisory coming up on November 20, which is a Monday, so that's it.
Are we okay for broadcast coming up? We're having issues with audio on Zoom, so maybe five to 10 minutes. All right, we're going to take a short break. Come back in five to 10 minutes. Five minutes? Leave the mic on. Okay.
Oh, he asked if your mic was on.
My mic is?
Nope.
Oh, nope. All right. There it is.
Well, no, she hasn't been speaking.
I haven't been talking.
All of our mics are on.
That's where I'm going. Okay.
I'm not starting over. You can hear her?
Yeah, right.
The one under the stairs?
Yeah. Snack shop.
And I have way too many cards up there.
Good stuff, though.
Yeah.
Johanna, do you want us to restart soon?
Jake's name is the new us. Because I'm not like the.
Because you're the coach, right?
I know, but I don't, I'm like the administrator of the Zoom woman arm. Jake, he's, he's on Zoom, but he probably can't hear us.
Yeah, what, what'd you call?
I'm jabbering.
Oh, you're jabbering.
Did he respond, Johanna?
Yeah, he said he was walking into it.
Do you go, Moke, ever to the smack meetings?
No, I haven't, since I've been.
I have it on my calendar, but.
All I've ever gone to is the geothermal advisory committee.
I just, I want to say someone wanted me to go, and that's why it's on my calendar, but I have something else.
The seismic?
Yeah. Seismic monitoring. Is that Scotts?
No, I haven't since I've been.
I have it on my calendar, but.
All I've ever gone to is the geothermal advisory committee.
I just, I want to say someone wanted me to go, and that's why it's on my calendar, but I have something else. I think that.
The seismic?
Yeah. Seismic monitoring. Is that Scott Harter?
Yeah, I think, no, maybe does. I don't know who that is. I've never been part of it.
Maybe it was Danielle. It looks like they got it in there.
I think they were shorter person. I mean, someone needs to be added. I don't think it was a quorum issue.
I think they wanted a supervisor. I can't remember.
Okay, so.
Seismic monitoring.
There's GAC, SMAC, and what's the other?
Okay, so Jake, you should be able to hear me. I can. I can see the feed going to Zoom.
Smacking.
Actually, I can see it going to Facebook, YouTube, and Granicus. And, yeah, why don't you see if you can talk to me?
Or Doug.
No, we cannot hear you. Who's the host? I think it's Johanna's the host. Is that right? No, I'm not hearing you at all. Okay, well then, let me try rebooting this laptop. Well, let's try this, and if this doesn't work, then if, you can just, wait, I'm going to just stop it now. Okay. Stop. No, because that's only for, that's only for video. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so let me go back there. Maybe I should just do a reboot. Because we weren't hearing you in here. Yeah. Exactly. So we just want to let everyone know we're having a technical issue. It may be with one of the IT laptops. And we're just going to reboot it and see if we can resume. Zoom. Yeah, it's still on. Okay, so now I'm, you should see me coming back in. Thank you. And let me, okay, you're going to make me co-host? Okay. Okay, so now can you, can you hear me in Zoom? Yeah, okay, Stephen said yeah. Okay, so was this laptop just for? Okay, great. All right. I think it's time to replace this one. Okay, thanks. Okay, Chair, we are ready to return.
Thank you. I think it was my turn on calendars. So yes, yesterday we did have a special RRA meeting. We talked about the next, the second round of the Strategic Growth Council grant that we're applying for. So as you might recall, last September, we apply, or October, we applied for one a year ago. And we narrowly missed that. And so we're doing it again. This time it's due in December, and we needed to have a group discussion about the possibility of a biochar utilization program in the county. So we kind of touched on that, and there's more to come on that later, hopefully, fingers crossed. And tomorrow, I have a gender review. It's possible I'm having a meeting with Fire Safe Council and our Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Logston. I have, I might have to miss my EELU community or committee meeting. I have a thing I have to do with my family. And then, Thursday, trying to decide if I can get to both the SMAC and the Fire Safe Council meetings. I have a discussion on the Mediterranean oak borer with Terry Logston and our Ag Commissioner. And I just want to alert everybody to some rather unfortunate news that we received at our Tree Mortality Task Force meeting a couple, two weeks ago, that the Mediterranean oak borer, which was first found in Napa County, was discovered through the, possibly through the cooperages where the French oak was being imported for barrels. And now the oak borer, it's an ambrosia beetle, is spreading through Sonoma and Napa Counties. And it was last year detected at the very southern end of Lake County, and now it's made its way all the way up to Lakeport and is devastating our valley oaks and blue oak populations. So I just want to let everybody know that we've been monitoring, or Mike Jones has been monitoring it, and he finally rang the alarm bell a couple of weeks ago. We're going to be bringing more to the board. So in the meantime, it's just really important to talk to people about not moving firewood around right now, because that's how this beetle moves. Then later in the afternoon, I'm going to have a meeting with a constituent in Kelseyville. And Friday, I am, I will be spending some time with my family this weekend. And I'm really sad to miss the Veterans Event. I really love that event at Big Valley. Monday, I could have my meeting with CAO Parker and then head to Oakland for CSAC for the week. And then, on the 20th, lots of meetings. Ag advisory, meeting with CAO, grant application meeting, and then the RRA meeting. And then, on the 22nd, I've got the NCO Board meeting. And then, being, coming back here for the 28th, the next meeting that I'll be at. Okay. So then, moving down on our agenda to 7.2. Consideration of holiday greeting cards for the board, from the Board of Supervisors to send to Lake County troops in the amount not to exceed $600 and authorize the county administrative officer or designated to purchase. And this is a conversation that Supervisor Crandall and I had. Just to give a little more personal touch to our overseas troops who are deployed away from their families during the holidays. And if we want to hopefully make this a new annual tradition coming from the board, that we can put in the tango mic boxes that go out November, December.
Yeah, it's usually the third week, third Thursday at the Amcoa Bank where they have their headquarters. And like, they put their proclamations that we have in the box. They, anything that's given from the county or anywhere, letters from kids, things like that, cards. So, so yeah, these can go along with it. This is plenty of time if it's approved to get it in there, so.
So I just envision just a really nice card with picture of our, of home, of our county, something. And then, a message from the board and packaged up. We anticipated about 250 to 300 cards. Somewhere around there, we can get an exact number. So maybe we bring this as an option out of the board budget is what I was thinking, even though it wasn't in the memo.
Trying to think of how many packages they do each time, but yeah. I can't think of it off the top of my head. I just know it's a huge cart full of boxes, so.
I just want to see what you all thought about that.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
So I'm going to vote no on this. I think it's a great idea. I just don't know that I want to use tax dollar payers for this. I think that we can kind of take example from the cards that we do get over the holidays from other representatives. And it all says on there, "Not paid for by taxpayer money." And I think that I'd be willing to volunteer my share out of my own pocket to make sure that this does happen, but not utilizing taxpayers' dollars. I want to make sure that goes back into the community itself.
That's a good point, and I'd be willing to contribute to that, too.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so it looks like it'll be about.
120.
120 each. Yep. So if we can get those contributions to admin by the end of the week, so we can get this rolling, that'd be great.
And I like the idea of a picture of the county itself to remind.
I like the idea of the picture of the county itself, just to remind them of home. I like that as well. Is there a simple message that goes along in there that we say, since this is Veterans Day? Something along the lines of?
Well, it will hit them in December, probably around the holidays, so just.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, and we appreciate, you know. Their service, but also, you know, we're sending our, we're sending them lots of Lake County warmth during this time when it's difficult to be away from their families. Okay, so I'll open this up to the public. Do we have anyone in the chambers? Do we have anyone in Zoom? Okay, go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The sound on the Zoom meeting began with you saying, "I think it's my turn to give my calendar." What happened to the rest of the supervisors? I've been, I've sat here all morning with this on.
So we had some difficulty in Zoom, but the broadcast continued in Granicus. And then there was an issue there, so we stopped the meeting. So we were just doing our calendars. If you want to go back and review Granicus, you can see what happened during that time period. But it wasn't very long. It was just calendars.
Well, you know, believe it or not, the calendar reports are one of the most important features of what the public learns about what you guys are doing, and we really appreciate it. So I will watch the Granicus thing. I just wondered what happened. Thank you.
Yep, sometimes we have technical difficulties. Okay. Okay, 7.3, consideration of proposed 2024 Board of Supervisors regular meeting calendar. I'll turn this over to CAO Parker. We have been sharing some thoughts on this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For your review, you received a draft of the proposed calendar. And what I'd like to do is go month by month, because I know there's different meetings. We have different conferences. We have different obligations. And just so we can revise it to accommodate everybody's schedule. So if we could start in January. I would like to reserve the 30th for the annual governance meeting, unless of course there's a conflict.
And I did have one. That's the week that I go to the Farm, Mansion, Rural Communities EPA meeting. But I did mention in hearing Supervisor Sabatier, if, I need to find out the schedule, of course. But if it's, I know the travel days are usually Monday. Tuesdays are usually like, what do you call those? They're, they're tours. And so depending on the tour and the timeframes, I might be able to just zoom in.
Could we just switch the 23rd and the 30th? I know it's a, it's a fifth Tuesday, but we have so many holidays that month. We could make it a special meeting?
Well, it would be, the 23rd would just be a regular meeting, and we would make it the governance.
Governance meeting.
That would be the agenda item.
And I don't see where else we can put governance other than outside of the Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay.
I just need consensus.
Yes.
Yes.
Then in February, I have not heard any issues or challenges, but.
So the issue and challenge will be that the 30th is a workshop, so it's not a board meeting. The 6th is a day off. And then, the 13th, half of the board will be in DC for NACO Legislative Conference.
Yep.
So I thought the 6th was the mid-year budget.
Oh, is that a different color?
Yeah.
Yes, it's yellow. I was like, ooh, did I misread this?
It's orangish-yellow instead of yellow with black.
Yeah, the 6th is the mid-year budget.
Gotcha, okay. Then I don't have an issue. I thought it was going to be three weeks of.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, we won't be here on the 13th, though. Are you, Supervisor Crandall, will you be in DC with the delegation this year?
I don't know. It depends on if I'm on the executive committee again. And I think they have all four and five supervisors. Last year, the, I don't know if that's the name for it, but the previous chair, he moved away to Arkansas. So they had an extra spot. But now the chair, Doug Teeter, from Butte, he'll be the past chair and probably will go with them now that they have a full five. So I mean, I'll have to wait and see.
Okay, so we may not have a quorum for the 13th.
March? Oh, so with that, February is consensus, and we move on to March. All right?
Yes.
Any issues on March?
No.
Any issues on April? When is the CSAC Legislative Conference? It's usually mid-April.
That's a good question. Usually it's mid-April. 12th and 13th was the last one. But I see no problem since there's not any gaps of missed meetings in between that.
Yeah, that would be the only thing for April.
All right, can we move on to May? I don't have any issues with May. All right. June?
There'll be one for NACO in June. We'll be in Florida.
No, I, that's July, but I have an issue for June. I'm hoping, and I know this puts a little more pressure, because we would typically do budgeting the week of Juneteenth, but because that's a holiday now, makes it a little complicated. If we could do the budgeting on the 12th and 13th, I feel like this just gives more flexibility for department heads and staff to be able to take a vacation. I know a lot of people don't vacation, you know, with school schedules and, and budgeting going the entire month of June, I feel like everyone's going to take a vacation in July, and that's going to comp. And that's going to complicate things for us, because we will be in Florida the week after the 4th, the 12th through the 16th. And I know that pushes it up a week, but it also gives a little bit more time for people to spread their time off, which is equally important.
So moving it to the 12th and 13th?
That's a whole two weeks.
Or we do it on the 20th and 21st.
I really don't mind doing that.
With your permission, may I ask Casey to come forward? And since it's, it's her budget this year. So I'd like to hear her input.
Hello, County Administration Officer. So the week of the 12th, the Otter will actually not be in California, she'll be in Florida.
Okay.
We can't do that week, but we can do the 20th and 21st.
Okay. Great. Okay.
All right, consensus?
Yep.
Yes, all right. July.
There'll be a NACO conference.
Yeah, so.
I was wrong on June.
Yeah, we will.
And that's the week of the 8th, correct?
I think it's the 12th.
Oh, okay.
It's the weekend, but the Monday is the, it depends on what the travel days look like coming back Monday or Tuesday. Last summer, we came back on Monday.
And I know that EPA for the second meeting is usually in July as well. I just, I know this, last year it was during the 15th, like that week, if that makes sense, second or, I think it was the third week.
So does anything need to get moved, or?
I just don't, but I don't know, it's tentative, you know, so.
Can I suggest that maybe the 30th be set as a potential special meeting in case? And that we could just cancel if we need to, that way it's already on the calendar?
Yeah, we have it set aside. What we'll do is, we'll just change the color.
Purple, purple, there you go.
We'll change the color.
They messed up on that one.
All right, anything else on July? No? August?
Looks good.
September?
Looks fine.
Okay. October? Okay. November?
I think it's fine.
Uh, yeah, it looks fine. Who knows what, when CSAC will be next year?
Right. And December?
Okay.
I don't think there's anything to change.
All right, we'll make the revisions and send it back out to the Board and distribute it to staff and wherever else it needs to be posted for the community.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve it with the changes?
Sounded like a motion.
I think so.
I'll second that.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Do we have any public comment on the calendar?
As amended. Did we?
Yeah, he said that.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Anybody in Zoom? I'm not seeing anyone in the chambers.
We, I have two individuals in the, right there that'll help you with that, the change date.
The amendments we're approving is moving the budget from the 26th and 27th of June to the 20th and the 21st, and July 30th into a potential special meeting.
Yes.
And moving the governance meeting.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposed 2024 Board of Supervisors regular meeting calendar as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, 7.4, consideration of A, Board appointment to the 2024 Rural County Representatives of California, RCRC, Delegate and Alternate; B, Board appointment of 2024 Golden State Connect Authority, GSCA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate; C, Board of Directors to the 2024 Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate; and B, Board appointment to the 2023 RCRC Environmental Services Joint Power Authority, ESG, ESJPA, Board of Directors, Delegate and Alternate. Who's taking it?
I'm, I'm still, I mean, I'm still willing.
Yeah. I'm still willing to.
Looks good.
Okay. Any public comment?
Actually.
Oh, go ahead.
One change, for the ESJPA, it has Supervisor Simon as primary and Lars as alternate. I believe it's supposed to be the opposite, or is it typical that it's like that? Vice Chair Simon, sorry.
I'm supposed to be, and then he just goes?
Okay.
Okay.
I knew he would, he was the one that.
Yeah, he's the one who attends all the meetings.
Okay, do we have anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the 2024 Rural County Representatives of California Delegate and Alternate, or I guess for just normal RCRC as the primary Chair, Chair Supervisor Crandall and the Alternate Chair Pyska.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint for the 2024 Golden State Connect Authority, GSCA, Board of Directors, the Delegate Supervisor Crandall, the Alternate Chair Pyska.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint the 2024 Golden State Finance Authority Board of Directors Delegate Supervisor Crandall, Alternate Chair Pyska.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Madam Chair, I move to appoint to the 2023 RCRC Environmental Services Joint Power Authority, ESJPA, Board of Directors, Delegate Vice Chair Simon and Alternate Director Lars Ewing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 7.5, consideration of appointments of a Director and Alternate to the California State Association of Counties, CSAC Board of Directors for 2024.
I would love to continue.
Me as well. Any comments from the Board?
Nope.
Any comments from the public? Anyone in Zoom? Okay.
So who's current Director?
I'm the Delegate and Chair Pyska is the Alternate.
Okay, I move to appoint Supervisor Sabatier, the primary representative, and Chair Pyska is the Alternate to the CSAC Board of Directors for 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 7.8, consideration of National Association of County and City Health Officials, NACCHO, funding opportunity to promote harm reduction and strategic patient-centered care.
Did we skip 7.6, or we did that earlier?
7.7?
No, we skipped 7.6.
Oh, I did skip.
We can go right back.
I'll go, let's just do 7.8, and I'll go back to 7.7, thank you. Come on up. All right.
Hi there.
Hey.
Kim Tangerman, Lake County Public Health Deputy Director. And I just wanted to explain what this item is. NACO, which was the National Association of County and City Health Officials. This is a federal grant that we have applied for, for $60,000. It was a really short turnaround time. We found out about it on November 1st. That's when we opened up the email, the opportunity. And it was due last night by close of business. But I wanted to let you know that this, Dr. Duhin and Sarah, who is the Vista, and Amanda from Admin, and myself pulled together and really did a bang-up job on getting this out. This grant actually aligns perfectly with work that is being done through the SafeRx Coalition, as well as the HCC, which is the County of Lake Healthcare Coalition and its agencies. And so when we saw this, we just knew we had to jump on this. What this will do is, the main project will be performed by Dr. Duhin, and it's for academic detailing, which is the supporting, supporting, educating, and expanding the current provider pool in Lake County that will treat with medically assisted treatment. The X waiver license was lifted some time ago, but there hasn't been a huge amount of providers stepping into that role now that they don't have to do that extra education. And this, we feel, will really benefit for the harm reduction efforts that we are all trying to do so much by getting more people, more providers onboard with medically assisted treatment. The, the H, well, the SafeRx Coalition is well underway for years now. And the HCC is a highly engaged group due to the COVID that they went through. So this is ambulances and the hospitals and all the clinics and things. And so all these agencies, both in SafeRx that are represented there and the HCC, are heavily impacted by the overdose crisis, and all are onboard with these efforts and this grant. We have letters of support from agencies to, that we submitted with this. So that's what I have. Are there any questions for me, though?
Thank you, do we have any questions?
Just what amount of overhead there is on the grant administration. It looks pretty simple, but.
Yeah, it's basically salary for Dr. Duhin and to hopefully bolster the opportunity to get a health program coordinator for SafeRx. And I will lovingly hand off those duties to a permanent person who can do them and do that, and do that service justice. So, yeah, it's salaries.
So it's a one-and-done, or we'd be reapplying in future?
This one is a one-and-done, but you know, I mean, we're hearing so much stuff that's tickling out there that I, I would be, I would be surprised if there was not more funding that came through this way. NACO's constantly putting out things that are of interest. It's just kind of picking what aligns with what we're already doing, you know, to, to help move it.
Okay. Anything from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Yeah, just want to follow up, do we need a motion? Because it seems like we're authorizing the Health Services Director to execute all documents related to funding. So just a question.
Yes, so it, it looks like it's, it's in two parts. There is a request for consensus from your Board's support for Health Services pursuit of the funding opportunity. So that's one part. If there is consensus, then.
Yeah, that's a yes for me.
And then the second part, and also a point of clarification, is to authorize the, by motion, to authorize the Health Services Director, a public health officer, and/or designees to execute all documents related to obtaining this funding opportunity. Because as I understand it, the grant hasn't been awarded, is that correct?
Correct.
So that would be the, the motion to execute all documents, at least at this stage, to, related to obtaining the funding opportunity under the grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, 7.6, consideration of appointment to the Lake County Vector Control District Board of Trustees. And it looks like we have an application from Frank Lincoln. I'm sorry, no, not Frank, yeah, Frank Lincoln. Yeah, I just went to Chuck Leonard instead. And Frank is a wonderful person and in my district. If someone else would like to handle this when we get to it, I'd really appreciate it. Do we have any comments?
Well, since you mentioned Chuck Leonard, he, this is, was one of his longtime positions in this committee, way past his time during his council membership over in the city of Clear Lake. Just want to share public appreciation. Chuck Leonard was a longtime committee member of the APC and LTA, as well as Vector Control, and truly appreciate his service to his community.
Do we have any public comment? Oh, okay.
If there's nothing further, Madam Chair, I move to appoint Frank Lincoln to the Lake County Vector Control District Board of Trustees.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, Frank. And now we can go to our consent items that have been pulled. 5.5. Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District of Directors, authorize the APCO to extend the temporary counter hours for the district.
That's 5.6.
Oh, I am having a really hard time reading today.
That's what we're here for.
It is the carbs. This is why I don't eat carbs. 5.5. A, approve travel to Sacramento for Supervisor Crandall to attend the RCRC Executive Committee meeting from November 7th to November 8th, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $300. B, approve travel to Oakland for Supervisor Pyska and Sabatier to attend the CSAC Annual Conference from 11/13 to 11/17, in a total amount not to exceed $4,100. And C, retroactively approve travel to Eureka for Supervisor Green to attend the North Coast EMS JPA meeting from November 1st to November 2nd, in a total amount not to exceed $275.
So the reason I pulled this was, this was the, I think, the second time. I think we had a retroactive, one of these not too long ago, for our visit over to Austin, Texas. So one of the things that I wanted to bring up was, I spoke with Admin, CAO Parker, that this seems somewhat, I don't want to use the word absurd, but a, a waste of staff time to go through a process where if we're appointed to a committee, we should be going to these meetings. And if they're taking us away from our area, that it should come along with lodging. And I, I believe that that is being worked on to fix our travel policy, so just wanted to mention that. However, what I asked for was the travel policy to look at it and check it out. And I, I just want to bring something up to our attention. I'm not looking to make any changes today. Some of it's retroactive, some of it is tonight, and that, that's not going to change anything. I, or at least I don't want to change anything that's already happened or that's happening. But I think we, there, there's an eligibility portion of our travel policy that says that, I'll, I'll just read it out loud. "Per applicable Government Code Sections, total reasonable actual single occupancy lodging expenses, as long as they do not exceed per diem allowances, will be reimbursable for certain conditions and circumstances as follows." The way that I read it in County Council can tell me if I'm not reading it correctly, but it's as follows, not has to meet one of the following. It's certain conditions and circumstances as follows. "Reasonable actual lodging expenses incurred by a member of the Board of Supervisors, if travel is specifically authorized per Section 1.6A," and that section speaks to being appointed to committees and, and those that meet and gather. "B, lodging is reimbursable for the evening preceding an out-of-county training meeting or other business event, when the traveler would have to leave their residence before 6:00 AM on the day of the event to arrive at their destination at the scheduled time." "C, lodging is reimbursable for the evening following an out-of-county training meeting or other business event, when the traveler would arrive at their residence after 10:00 PM." And so the reason that I bring this is, obviously this needs to be changed, because none of these things consider the time of day spent. And if we're asking somebody to drive tired, if somebody got up at 8:00 in the morning, and they're coming home at 10:00 at night, sorry, you can't get a hotel, but you've just worked for 12 hours, and now I need you to drive home. And so I, I, what we're doing doesn't seem to fit logically within what we're asking every other staff member to follow. But I also feel like these things need to be reviewed and resolved, so that it, it's about safety and it's about efficiency. And so I just wanted to bring it up, because I went through all the reading and, and just wanted to better understand what the policy was that we had approved. And I'm glad that staff is working on that. I don't know what the timeline is, wondering if that might, yeah, I think I heard December. I didn't want to just shout that out there. So I'm glad that's coming sooner than later, just because I feel like these things are difficult to follow and difficult to meet. But at the same time, I want to make sure that if we're asking staff to meet these requirements, that we're also following the same requirements. So just wanted to bring it up, just for thoughts and, and discussion, since it's relevant to the subject matter of what we're proving today. But again, happy to move forward today, because I don't think these things make logical, reasonable sense when put into practice.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Nope, okay. I'll bring it back to the Board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the travel for Supervisor Crandall for RCRC meeting from 11/7 to 11/8, and approve travel to Oakland for Supervisors Pyska and Sabatier to attend the CSAC Annual Conference from 11/13 to 11/17, and approve travel to Supervisor Green for his. Green for his attendance to his JPA Meeting from 11/1 to 11/2. And I hope that is appropriate enough.
In the respective total amounts not to exceed, as stated.
As stated by county council to continue my motion.
In the memo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Director Jones is on her way, but since Director French is here, maybe we could take out his item while she's on her way.
5.11, A, waive the formal bidding process, I'm sorry, waive the formal bidding requirement per Section 2-38.1, extension of annual agreements, and B, authorize the IT Director to issue a purchase order to Kara Soft Technology Corp. for Zoom video conferencing licensing in the amount of $30,860.90.
And so, Madam Chair, I pulled this, and I apologize if I didn't specifically state that I was pulling. I know you and I had back and forth on email. But I was ask, asking based on the attachments, on the number of licenses that we have, how many are actually being used? And that number was a little vague in the sense that we don't have a full annuals worth of data available to say exactly what that is, but last month, we can see certain numbers. And I just kind of wanted to take the opportunity to speak to department heads and ourselves. If you need an account, maybe you should have a conversation with the department head, and maybe you should have a conversation with Director French, because there are some user licenses that are available that are, or not being utilized. And I want to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our bucks. So for example, I don't have a specific Zoom account when I, I, I actually buy my own because it's been easier that way for me to do that. But maybe I need to let go of what I'm paying for and just have a conversation with Director French and set up an account. I know that we had supervisor accounts. I think we have three that we might have. I don't know that we have five. But I just wanted to put it out there, just because I really want to make sure we're using this to the most efficient way possible, rather than leaving stuff behind on the table.
Well, just to follow up then, to add some nuance to the term license, there are some licenses that allow you to record, go over an hour, such like that. And then there's personal licenses, which I think is what I have activated on my machine, that would not be covered by this charge. So, and if there was any clarification, it's like, what license are we talking about? Are they department head level? Are they, you know, staff service analyst level? Just what's the, without knowing the entire breakdown, what's the general distribution of these licenses and the general purposes for which they're used? Because to me, these are heavy lift licenses that might be central to a department's function, whereas what I do my Zooming with, you know, my personal license is fine.
Sure, so Shane French, IT Director. Essentially, there's really only one kind of license for an individual that we purchase. And Zoom actually lets our users use the product for free for any meeting that's conducted less than 40 minutes. So you go over 40 minutes, you have to have a license. So for the most part, that meets the needs of most county employees. But what we do see is a lot of departments, especially those that have staff that work from home routinely, they're purchasing the license, the, the full license, the license that is listed on here, this Zoom One, they call it. And that is the license that allows you to have over 40-minute meeting. I think you can go up to like three hours or something like that. And so I think the report, report that you and I were talking about where we said, hey, you know, who's using these, who isn't using these? We, I do have the ability to kind of report on that. But it's, it's kind of a moving target, right? Because when I buy these licenses, I buy them for a whole year. And if somebody doesn't use it this month, but they use it the next 11 months, I can't go and say, well, actually, we didn't want that license, right? It's pretty much, you have to buy it for the year. And I buy it and I, I allocate the charge to the department directly. And so they pay for that year. And I unfortunately don't have a way to say, okay, I'm going to bill you for 11 months instead of 12, that kind of thing. But, I mean, certainly, it makes sense for departments to be analyzing this usage. I don't know to what extent each individual department is, is analyzing that usage. But I, I think, again, if you have a department that is primarily work from home and they say, well, everybody gets one of these licenses, then there's certainly going to be some people that are heavier users than, than others.
I just wanted to provoke conversation so that we make sure we're utilizing this to the fullest.
I gave mine up last year because I wasn't using it.
Use mine. I have three town halls.
Yep.
Kind of a necessary thing.
I've never had one, too.
I'm guessing you don't want one either.
Yeah, I don't want one. Shane helps me get in my computer. Thank you, Shane.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Bring it back to the board for action.
Thank you very much, Director French. I move to waive the formal bidding requirement per Section 2-38.1, extension of annual agreements, and B, authorize the IT Director to issue a purchase order to Kara Soft Technology Corp. for Zoom video conferencing licenses in the amount of $30,860.90.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
5.13, adopt resolution changing county maintain mileages, mileage for 2022, Public Works. Director DeLeon?
Madam Chair, I am here on behalf of Director DeLeon.
Okay.
The item was pulled because an attachment A was added yesterday, and we wanted to make that as far as, declare that as far, as far as the public record. Should you have any questions, I'll, I'll send those to Scott for any answers. But I don't, I couldn't answer any of the questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Does the public have any questions? Anyone in Zoom? Nope, okay, I'll bring it back for action.
Offer the resolution?
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green? And Supervisor Pyska? Yes. Okay, we have. 5.8 is our last one, and we are waiting for Director Jones. Take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. See you back in five minutes. Okay, 5.8, approve agreement between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA, New Life LLC, for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services in the amount of $10 million for fiscal year 2023-24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
So the reason I wanted to pull this is mainly ask some questions to Director Jones and also make sure the board was aware. So one of the ways that we figured out how to make this work, because I believe we're still the only county that is involved with the Tribal 638 at this moment in time, I wanted to, I wanted to talk about numbers as far as dollar amounts, and I also wanted to talk about success rates and outcomes. And so in previous communication with Director Jones, I found out that we had spent approximately, approximately $5.5 million, or the cost of the services was approximately $5.5 million or over $5 million, and that we were still seeking, as of October 12th, $4.7 million in reimbursements. That has been updated since yesterday to $3.5 million. We are still looking for $319,000 from the first time that we did a contract with New Life. I believe that was a total of about $1.6 million. So we're looking at maybe 25% is still kind of being worked on as far as getting reimbursements, and approximately 60 to 70%, if not more, I don't have the percentages right in front of me, for getting the reimbursements of 22-23. The original agreement, which we had to change, was that we would not pay New Life until we were reimbursed. That didn't make sense to the state because you can't get reimbursed for something that you haven't paid for. And so we took that out of the contract. There was still an agreement with New Life that we wouldn't pay them until we got all the full reimbursements. But I wanted to share with you where we stand on reimbursements, which to me is a large number. I'm worried that we are continuing, and I'm expecting that we're going to see a higher than 5.1, 5.5 million this year, since they jumped from 1.6 to above 5 million, that we're probably going to still see an increase. I don't believe we've plateaued out quite yet, but that, we'll see. We went from, I believe, 27 patients in a month to 62 patients in a month. So all, all good things. The services required, the services necessary. But I don't, the, the comfort level of not having it within the contract that we don't have to pay until we get reimbursed is of concern to me as I see that we still have so much that we're waiting on to be reimbursed, which means New Life is waiting on those dollars. And from the perspective of New Life, which I can't speak for, so I have, I'm, I'm kind of making assumptions, at what point in the millions of dollars of reimbursements are they going to allow us to get deeper into before they ask us for money, since there's nothing in the contract that protects us from them saying, we've been, it's not in the contract that we can't be reimbursed until you're reimbursed? And so I just, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward. The service should not be postponed. I just wanted to share these numbers. I'm concerned about the large numbers and the potential issue or lack of protection. I also want to make the assumption that we will get these reimbursements, but again, we're still waiting for about 25% of the reimbursements from 21-22, and still waiting for 60 to 70% plus from 22-23. And I, I, until I can see that those things zero out and get completed, my comfort level will continue to stay concerned and hypervigilant because of the fact that in the past, we have to had, we, we've had to loan ourselves some money in order to pay it off, and this number is getting large. So again, it's not an issue with the service, other than I do want to ask about the outcomes because I'm expecting that those things are good. It's just a matter of where we stand and what we might owe if the hammer drops and New Life says, we can't keep doing this service without you paying us, while we're still waiting on the state and the feds, or I believe just the state, to provide us the reimbursement. So that's my reason for pulling this and having the conversation, just because it's a large number, and that's it. And wondering if we can get some outcome information from Director Jones.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that. So I want to make a few points of clarification here. At no time has Lake County spent one penny on these services. Not one cent has been out of any of, any Lake County funding source. And so graciously, Pinoleville Tribal Nation continues to put up the federal financial participation required to draw down the Medicaid reimbursements. And within the contract, though I don't have it in front of me, I believe it is very clear that they may not seek reimbursement from us until DHCS renders reimbursement. And so initially, the claims that are dating back from 21-22 that are exclusively Medicare is because DHCS did not have a system in place for drug-medical counties to actually bill that whatsoever. They were flabbergasted, I would say, that a DMC county had opted into that. I do know that San Diego is actually teed up next. Then we've been helping work with the team down there to help them understand this. So you can imagine, they're also on a very steep learning curve. So they are expanding. So just a point of clarity there. And New Life, the entire time that we've worked with them, has been incredibly gracious, understanding beyond helpful, truly subject matter experts in many arenas. And so they continue to be an excellent partner. And so I, I don't have a concern that that will change. I also believe that we'll, we're navigating multiple barriers around payments, and that was largely, the resolution that we had brought forth canceling our reserves had not much to do with New Life. It's the fact that we've switched electronic health records, and that's going pretty rough for a lot of counties. So we're not alone in that. But I do expect it's, it's continuing to get better and those payments continue to come through. So overall, the financial solvency of the department is not something that I'm concerned with at this time, especially with our payment reform rates. Circling back to New Life, I agree about the outcome data, and I do know that New Life does collect a lot of outcome measures, and I'm, I have tapped them to provide the data around that. I can just report that I'm aware of six patients receiving services at New Life Clinic who had hepatitis C, were diagnosed and treated through primary care that's offered as part of the bundled rate, and are now in remission for hepatitis C. So that's an incredible, to me, an outcome. Of course, many other outcome that we're working on, and I agree with you. I think that's all.
And if you don't mind my clarifying, the only money that we've put into it, we got back, and that was two years ago, when we did have to take $835,000 out of loans. And that was not because of the electronic.
Threat.
Billing. That was just a matter of appropriations or along those lines.
Yes, I believe so. And we were still figuring out the IG, the intergovernmental transfer process. And I don't remember now at which point Pinoleville was like, we'll do the federal share of cost, because if we had to, that would be alarming. But we're not, so, yeah.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Anyone in Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve agreement between County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, doing business as New Life LLC, for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services in the amount of $10 million for fiscal year 23-24, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, and we will move into our closed session items. 8.1, no, 9. 9.1, consideration, I'm sorry, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, Earthways Foundation, Inc., v. County of Lake et al. 9.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, McCormick v. California Public Employees Retirement System et al. And 9.3, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. So we will now move into closed session, and thank you for joining us today.